Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we'll begin with roll call, please.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Don Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessam.
Here.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Here.
Nancy, would you please lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you Nancy. And Stu, would you please read the mission? Here. No, it's not. There you go.
The Thompson School District mission statement is, "The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel."
Thank you, Stu. And the first item of business will be the adoption of the agenda. And this would be for today, February 19th, 2025. Are there any changes to the agenda for today? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
So Stu.
Second.
And Denise. I have first from Stu, a second from Denise. Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
She's aye. Dance to it. All right, thank you. Agenda was approved. We'll move into the approval of the minutes, and we have two sets of meeting minutes to approve. The first is for the January 22nd, 2025 meeting. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda, I mean, the minutes as printed.
So moved.
Okay, was that Denise? Denise, and Stu again. So Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Approval of the minutes for February 5th, 2025. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to the minutes on that meeting? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for February 5th, 2025.
I'll move.
Thank you Nancy.
I'll second.
Denise. So it was first from Nancy, a second from Denise. So Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran. Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All motions, all minutes were approved as they were voted unanimously. All right, moving into public participation, we'll start with Dr. Schaefer's report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. Welcome to February, and I'm pleased to provide you with this month's update. February 5th through the 9th was designated as National School Counseling Week. As part of the commemoration, we recognized our amazing counselor, counseling team members who play a critical and necessary role in development and lives of our students. We are so grateful for their tireless efforts and contributions. On January 25th, Thompson School District hosted its 28th Annual District Spelling Bee, a contest that is designed for elementary and middle school students. Twenty-four incredible elementary spellers from 14 TSD schools tackled 95 challenging words, while 19 talented middle school spellers from five district schools battled through 96 words to claim their spots as top spellers. Congratulations to all of our participants, and best of luck to the six students who qualified for the state spelling bee. On January 31st, students across the district celebrated the 100th day of the school year with creativity and excitement. Many campuses hosted fun activities, including the chance for students to dress up as if they were 100 years old. Here is a photo of four kindergartners from Riverview School who went all out with their outfits to mark this special milestone. Ferguson High School hosted a career panel in their capstone class for our soon-to-be graduates. Several career professionals spoke to students about their journeys through education, career preparation, and real-life job responsibilities. The panelists highlighted the skills in Thompson School District's Portrait of a Graduate, communicator, critical thinker, self-advocate, citizen, and collaborator, emphasizing how these skills transfer directly to the workplace. On January 23rd, TSD hosted a dual-language program forum at the District Administration Building. The meeting was an opportunity for families to share their experiences and thoughts about TSD's dual-language program and to help the district plan for the future. Thank you to all who attended. Thompson School District was pleased to host the Colorado Department of Education as they visited a few campuses in our district to take photos and record videos of the school's Warm Welcome Program. Each morning, staff members at these schools ensure that each student receives a warm welcome and a wish for a terrific day. Thank you, CDE, for visiting us and for your support. So I have the incredible honor of introducing the Loveland High School Band as they showcased their talent at the Colorado Music Educators Association Conference in Colorado Springs back on January 36th. This was a well-deserved opportunity for these dedicated and talented musicians to shine on a prestigious stage, and they delivered a fantastic performance. We're really proud of you. So we have Mr. Kyle Friesen and maybe some members of his talented crew here, so we're going to invite you up and give you a few minutes of the podium.
Thank you so much to Dr. Schaefer and Dr. Lessam, who were able to attend our performance. Members of the board, we want to thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you just a little bit this evening about our experience. I'm going to turn it over to the students, who all took much better notes than I did, so they will be more prepared tonight. CMEA is Colorado Music Educators Association. There is a conference for professional development that happens every year in January. They select three high school bands out of the entire state to perform as representatives of what is possible in music education here in Colorado. This is the third time a group from Loveland High School has been selected since I was appointed here in 2012, and it's so special every time, and I'd say this is probably my favorite time we've gotten to go down and perform. So I have some students who came tonight who just wanted to speak about their experiences that you helped support, that everyone in our district helped support, so that you can hear from the students. So who wants to go first? Riley is up first.
Well, I just want to say thank you again for letting us have this opportunity to come talk, and also for just aiding in this opportunity for us to go. I personally had an amazing endeavor doing this, especially with these two great people. I'd like to highlight Owen and I had a pretty cool solo, so that was pretty fun. And I just wanted to go over the couple things that I thought were a great thing to take away from this. So with this opportunity, we had a great opportunity to both build our team-like leadership. So I and Owen are both principal players within the band and had to lead our own sections doing this. And we were also under this time crunch to get to this performance, which we don't get to experience in a normal school year, which is really cool to see. And on top of that, this conference also allowed us to go see a brand-new array of different people to listen to our music. So we often get to go to the CBA, Colorado Band Masters Association, contests you could say, or festivals, which often you see a lot of our other high schools. But in this conference, we got to see a bunch of band educators, which is very different, but also a really cool experience. And I'd like to talk about how this was more extensive for us to learn. One great part of this, I guess we could, convention, that's the word. One great part of this convention is that they had a bunch of different, different business owners and stuff there, so we get to go look at all the different things that we want to get to see in our own high schools, so we get to go see different instrument manufacturers and different teachers, and see how they can teach different ways of band. And that's most of what I have to say, but on top of that, it was just a great opportunity for us to build better peer connections. We don't get to travel very often, or especially that far, and especially with that small group of people. We're all in marching band, and that's a huge group to go with. So this was just a really great opportunity, and I want to say thank you again for allowing us to do that and helping us.
Okay. Hi, my name is Olivia, and I am a junior at Loveland High School. Being a part of this program has widened my horizons to a multitude of opportunities that I don't think I would have been able to experience if I hadn't joined. I've made so many lifelong friendships and have seen so many amazing things, I just, I'm beyond grateful to even be a part of this. The whole CMEA experience really opened my eyes to the amazing potential that our program truly has. Just by doing things like sectionals with professional musicians that Mr. Friesen was kind enough to bring in, to pushing us beyond our abilities with music that seemed virtually impossible when we first looked at it. Just for all to pay off in the end by a performance in front of the best of the best at one of the most prestigious hotels there is. This experience has been life-changing, and I have had the pleasure to make memories that will be held on to for a lifetime. I cherish all moments, whether it's with friends or in a group of people playing music, with people who truly understand how I am and believe in the same things as me. I believe you can only find this being in a group like this. I just wanted to say a big thanks to the people who made this possible for me. As a first-gen student, I didn't go into high school thinking that I would even get to experience something like this, nonetheless know that in college, I'm probably going to continue to do music, even if it's not in my degree. I would also like to thank my band director, Mr. Friesen, who never lets anyone in the program fall short of their true potential. Thank you guys for giving me so many opportunities.
Okay, my name is Owen, and I play trombone, and I'm a junior. And this experience was really interesting because, kind of like Riley said, we every year go to CBA, and that's super fun to do. But with that, we get our music in January, and then we perform it in March and April. And it's great to work on that music and whatever, but this year, being able to like start from the very beginning of the school year, getting really like interesting and unique music that like we wouldn't be able to play at CBA, allowed us to work on that for like so long, and so it allowed us to advance farther than we have maybe in the past because of the amount of time that we were able to put into it. And then it also led to a bigger payoff because in the end, we got to perform in like a really beautiful place and in front of like super like knowledgeable and a really unique audience that I think was really inspiring to me to be able to like go through that experience and really enjoy that. And overall, the whole experience was just really like exciting. I know everyone like in the band was able to be like super pumped for it versus like, because it's something new, something fun, that like not many people have gotten to do, so it's like we're one of the, at least in like our grade, or who we know in high school, we're like the first group that's done this in a while, and so having the opportunity to go down and perform was just really amazing because music can change like everyone's life, and I think that was really special. So this is definitely the most fun band trip I've been on, the coolest band trip I've been on in my time, and yeah, just thank you again for such an amazing opportunity to do that.
Sorry, I have to take pictures. I'm also very into social media. Again, I just want to reiterate, thank you for allowing the students to come speak with you this evening. Their, their experience, a once-in-a-lifetime thing for them to get to do, for them to get to share that with you is super important to me. So thank you for your time tonight, and thank you again for your support so that we were able to go down and perform for all of the Colorado music educators. Have a wonderful evening.
I have a couple questions.
All right.
One is, how many of you actually went?
Right around 50. So it's just our top ensemble. We have three curricular ensembles at Loveland High School, and this was our, our wind symphony that was selected.
And what was the song that you prepared to play, the music that you played?
We, normally we do a 15-minute program, and this was a 45-minute program, so the students.
So you had 45 minutes?
A lot of music, yes. So we performed for like 45 minutes of, of music down there after Dr. Schaefer had the, the honor of getting to introduce us. We were so glad he was able to come down straight from the airport to see our performance. But one thing that's really important to me when we do opportunities like this, is there are middle school band directors in the audience, there are high school band directors, college band directors, and I want everyone to come away from what we do saying, here's something new, here's something I didn't know about, here's a great piece of educational music. So we played everything from college-level repertoire down to what a middle school band would play. And, you know, I think we all have our favorite pieces maybe of it. For me, it was, we ended with a piece called Italian Rhapsody by Julie Giroux, which was super fun. It's about every, everything you could think of as far as Italian music and maybe that stereotype, but it was commissioned by a, by a director whose parents were from Italy, so he commissioned her to write this piece, and we had a lot of fun performing that, Riley. And Owen both had huge feature solo things in that one, so maybe that's their favorite too. But we had a lot, a lot of fun getting to put that together.
Is that the piece you played at the Christmas, I mean, the holiday program at the end?
Yeah, that's the one that I was like, hey, this is really for CMEA, but we're going to play it anyway. So yes, the holiday concert, that's the one.
Anybody else have questions?
What instruments? I think you, you've said you played the trombone, what? Okay, great job, thank you.
Can we do a picture?
Yeah, of course. For sure. Where would you like us to go?
Right up here.
Come for a little bit, because the board will go behind you. Yep, they'll just. They're going behind you, yep. All right. See if I can see everybody. Amy, can you slide that way for me a tiny bit? Okay. All right, on three. One, two, three.
There will be a lot of pictures tonight. Okay, next. I am very happy to report that Thompson School District has four students who have been selected as Betcher Scholarship semifinalists. So if you are one of the four students, or all four, if you're in the audience, if you can just stand up, I'm hoping that there's one, two, three. Do we have all four? Okay. All right. Betcher Scholarship is a four-year, full tuition and partial living expenses merit-based academic scholarship awarded to graduating Colorado high school students. Award recipients on average rank in the top 2% of their graduating classes. The following few slides will spotlight our six fantastic honorees. Loveland High School has two semifinalists this year. A special recognition goes out to Ellie Moran and Edward Jacobson for this amazing Also, congratulations to Mountain View High School's Iliana Collins and Thompson Valley High School's Patrick Tucker for advancing to the semifinalist stage of this process. This is a terrific achievement for both of these excellent students. So congratulations to our Betcher semifinalists. And don't go too far, we'll be taking a picture with you in a minute. I also want to congratulate Iliana Collins, once again, who was selected as a Daniels Scholar finalist. The Daniels Program offers a comprehensive four-year college scholarship that provides financial and personal support focused on helping Daniels Scholars to succeed in college and life. We are also pleased to announce that Iliana has advanced to the finalist stage in the Betcher Scholarship process as well. So congratulations to these amazing students. We'd love to invite you up so we can take a picture with you and honor you, so come
That's good. Good. I think we're good. All right, on three. One, two, three.
So next, I'm going to invite Dr. Melissa Schneider, who's our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, to join me at the podium. This evening, we have the privilege and honor to recognize four schools of distinction here in the Thompson School District. So I'm going to join Melissa at the podium, and I'm going to give Melissa the honors of explaining what does it mean to be a school of distinction.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the school board, Melissa Schneider, Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services, and I am here to present to you our four schools who have qualified for our in-house award of a school of distinction. In the state of Colorado, we award school districts with districts of distinction who achieve a point of 74 or above on our rating scale, and so what we do as a district is we like to recognize schools that have achieved that. And this year, we have four, and so we are very excited to celebrate them tonight. The first one I will mention is Cary Martin Elementary School, and so we have Nikki here to receive this award, so thank you so much. And second, we have Lincoln Elementary School, and while their president, principal wasn't able to be with us tonight, they are at a Title I conference. We do have a member of the school to, to receive the award. And next, we have Loveland Classical School, and we have Dr. Ian Stout here to receive the award tonight. And last but not least, we have Coyote Ridge Elementary School, and we have Dion here to receive it. Want to get a group photo?
Dion, I'm going to have you step on the back, if that's okay, just because you're tall. There we go. Yep, just so I can make sure to see everybody. Looks like you moved this way to our mark, just like that. Okay, I think we're good. Okay, you ready? On three. One, two, three.
So next, we move on to our Top of Thompson and Community Champion Awards. As you know, each month, we recognize three staff members, one from each of our employee groups, our classified, our licensed, and our APT, which is our administrative group. These are peer nominated awards, individuals who stand out as being distinguished. And so they're, again, peer nominated. We also have a Community Champion Award. These are businesses or nonprofits or other members of our community that help and support our schools. So we will first start with our Top of Thompson Awards. And first, we're going to invite Classified. So we have Michelle McLeish, who's the attendance clerk at Riverview PK8 School. And Michelle was nominated by Megan Dupont. So if you can please step forward.
So I didn't know I was supposed to present this award, but I am Megan Dupont. Oh, perfect. So I'm the school nurse at Riverview. I also have birth at high school, and I have worked with Michelle for four years. She used to be my health aide there for two years. And so I was excited to give her this award. So Michelle does so much more than just attendance here at Riverview. She is our main health office backup and has been delegated to all five of our students with diabetes. She has been a huge help in showing our new health aide how things are run in the health office and in the front office. She was previously Riverview's health aide and has shared all of her knowledge and tips with our new health aide, who is actually here tonight, Tavon. Not only is she an awesome attendance clerk and health office backup, she also manages the front door, the desk, answers the phone, organizes volunteers, has lunch and recess duty, made a whole school schedule for Picture Day, which includes hearing and vision screening. She knows all the students by name, who their parents are, how they get home in the afternoon, and who picks them up. She knows all this from memory. If she doesn't know, she knows who to ask to find out. Not only is she a hard worker, she is always up for a laugh, and she makes the front office a fun and exciting place to work. So congratulations, Michelle. You deserve this.
Congratulations, Michelle. Next, we move on to Licensed, and we have Nick Blanco, who's the Dean of Students at Ferguson High School and the Thompson Career Campus. And Nick was nominated by Keisha Martin.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. I don't have Mackenzie here with me tonight. So I know, next time, next time. It is my absolute honor and pleasure to introduce to you our Dean of Students, Nick Blanco. Nick started at Ferguson High School and Thompson Career Campus in the middle of the school year last year, right in the spring semester. So if you know, you know. It's, yeah, not an easy task to do by any means. During the 23-24 school year, he had to manage a lot of discipline referrals in the building while also trying to build relationships with students in the process and learn how we do business at Ferguson and Thompson Career Campus, which, you know, doesn't always pair well when you're trying to build relationships and manage the referral process. But he handled it with such grace and professionalism. Nick finished last school year out very strong and came into this school year determined and focused on building relationships with students right from the start, day one. He has taken on many leadership roles with leading our Give Next, Sources of Strength, leading our reengagement team, implementing several new PBIS systems to celebrate students more frequently during the week, which is our Fergie Friday celebrations, supporting students in their credit recovery work, and using his time during discipline referrals to really build students up and encourage them instead of giving them harsh words and consequences. He is a team player and very invested in the mission of our school, which is providing our students with alternative experiences that are different and not less. He embraces that mission every day with how he approaches our students and staff. Nick provides students their dignity when conducting discipline and views that as an opportunity to coach students up and encourage them to make better choices while setting them up with a plan for success. Nick has been identified by several students in our building as their trusted adult, which I think is a testimony in the short amount of time that he's been with us. He is making an impact on our students' lives every day. We are honored to have him as a part of our team and thankful he has joined our Ferguson family. Nick is the Top of Thompson and is fully committed to serving our students of our district with optimism, encouragement, pride, and fidelity and equity. And I couldn't be more honored than to be standing here today with him as part of our team. Way to go, Nick. Proud of you.
Oops, my speaker. Congratulations, Nick. We actually do not have APT, but we do have our Community Champion. And so I'm going to invite up Assistant Principal Dan Cowgill from Mountain View High School. And Dan will be recognizing honoring Pelican Joe's Pizzeria.
Hi there. As a new local business in our neighborhood, Pelican Joe's has proven to be an invaluable partner in supporting our students and school activities, and I would like to nominate them for the Community Champion Award. Since opening its doors, Pelican Joe's Pizzeria has consistently gone above and beyond in creating a positive relationship with our school. Their support is evident in multiple ways, including offering generous discounts on pizza to our students who visit during off-campus lunch breaks. This not only helps students afford a meal, but also fosters a sense of community between the business and our school. In addition, Pelican Joe's has been incredibly helpful in providing large orders for team events, school clubs, student celebrations, and other school functions. Their ability to accommodate our needs and deliver quality food in a timely manner has been crucial in supporting student activities and events. What stands out the most, however, is the kindness and professionalism of their staff. Both students and staff members are always treated with respect, and Pelican Joe's management team is always open to discussions when concerns arise, working collaboratively with our school administration to strengthen ties and improve the overall experience for everyone involved. I believe Pelican Joe's Pizzeria is a shining example of how local business can positively impact their communities. Their ongoing support has made a significant difference to the students and faculty of MVHS, and I wholeheartedly recommend them for the recognition as a valued business partner in our neighborhood.
I just want to say a couple of words. I'm sorry. First of all, this is our third restaurant. I'm so happy to be in this community. We have three granddaughters that go to school here. And it's, education is real important to us everywhere we are, because I believe it builds a stronger community, and it helps us. And I guess the last thing I'll say is I'm an old guy, and I talk to other old guys, and they all say, well, kids these days. And I tell them, kids these days are better than kids my days. And they argue with that, but I truly believe it. And thank you, guys. The last thing I'll say is, we're happy to help out the school district, but you got to ask. Thank you.
Any individual schools and things like that, contact us.
Thank you. And we'd like, actually like to take a picture with our Community Champions and also with Michelle and Nick, if you can come forward. We'll take a picture, please.
Nancy, let me have you stand on the end next to Alexandra. Is that okay? Cool. That's better. Okay, you ready? Here we go. On three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Finally, I am pleased to introduce Principal John Dumbleton from Riverview PK8. As you know, each month, we showcase and spotlight one of our terrific schools here in the Thompson School District. So Principal Dumbleton, if you want to come forward, and it looks like you might have brought some guests with you.
Yes, we'd be happy. Good evening, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, and school board members. My name is John Dumbleton, and I'm the principal at Riverview PK8. And it is my honor to introduce some special guests to you tonight. But one thing I want to say about Riverview is it's a really special place. It's a special school. And what makes it special are its people. Our students, our staff, and our families are second to none. And I am really excited to share some of what we're doing through their eyes and their lens. So these students deserve a huge shout out. They prepared, they rehearsed, it was amazing. But I also want to shout out our StuCo sponsors. Mrs. Saunders, Mrs. Smith, and Mrs. Morton do an incredible job each and every day with our students. But they also did a great job of preparing them for tonight. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Mason.
Hi, my name is Mason, and I'm in fourth grade. I was in Riverview the first day it opened. One of the things I love about Riverview are the lots of clubs and activities. Some of them include Art Club, Basketball Club, and Hundred Mile Club. Another thing I like about Riverview is that you can stay for so long because it is PK through eight. One way I show leadership is by being a student council. Riverview Student Council is here tonight for this presentation.
Hello, my name is Lexi Kirby, and I'm in the fifth grade at Riverview. I have been at Riverview since it opened in 2021. I was in second grade when it opened, and throughout my years here, I have been in student council twice, Girls on the Run, Battle the Books, and GE Math. When I learned RISE for the first time, I saw that it was an amazing way to show the outstanding things that Riverview does. RISE is an acronym for resilience, integrity, supportive, and engaged. We show this everywhere in our building, like the cafeteria, the playground, and so much more. When students are showing RISE, they earn Purple Feathers and Silver Feathers. Silver Feathers are awards that students can earn when they are doing the right thing. These are awarded every week on Friday morning. Purple Feathers, on the other hand, are more common. These you can use at the Purple Feather Store, so you could be rewarded for your good work throughout the building.
Hi, my name is Everly. I'm in sixth grade. This is my first year at Riverview. I moved from Texas, and ever since I came here, I've had I've had so many great opportunities and I've made amazing friends. At Riverview, we celebrate student agency and leadership. One way I get to show it is by Give Next and Student Council. And there are so many other ways other students are able to show it, too.
Hello, my name is Brody Music, and I'm an eighth grader at Riverview. I've been at Riverview since fifth grade in 2021. I show leadership by being in student council, Give Next, and Sources of Strength. I've also been doing many been doing many sports for Riverview, which includes swim, track, and basketball. I'm going to tell you about the Sources of Strength program, which is run by our incredible English language arts teacher, Emily Snowden. Sources of Strength accepts all sixth through eighth graders. Sources of Strength's main goal is to prevent unhealthy mental health in students at Riverview and all schools. Our mission statement is to empower a well world, provide exceptional training and curriculum for youth at Riverview. We help students who experience things like suicide, violence, bullying, and substance misuse. SOS has a firm commitment to providing evidence-based programming that is responsive to our students through their peers and classmates. Miss Snowden's goal is to connect students with others and spread positivity. We connect students by our student-initiated campaigns. Last year, the entire school participated in our kindness campaign, which our goal is to spread kindness. We passed out kindness affirmation cards, and students went into classrooms and read kindness books to our elementary students. Our inclusion campaign was all about celebrating what makes us unique. We did this by taking personality pictures and Hispanic heritage photos. Our FaceTime Fridays and First Fend programs welcome our kindergartners, first graders, and new students into the building.
Hello, my name is Melissa Ryan, and I'm one of the eighth grade representatives for student council. I'm here to present a slide about our school's Give Next team. Give Next is a school-based youth grant-making program for middle and high school students in Lammer County. Give Next has done many things in our district. They've partnered with nonprofits. For example, they've done Horses and Horses and Bodom Fighters. They raise money to give either to our schools or the nonprofits. We planned and ran a Veterans Day assembly earlier this year where we celebrated the veterans who served our country and paid the way for our safety. Give Next is also is also doing an entrepreneur fair later this year to help raise money to pass the goal that we reached last year.
Hi, my name is Ella, and I'm a part of the gifted education program. I have a twin, and Riverview has welcomed our differences gracefully. We are both a part of the GE and StuCo team. I have been here since second grade. I'm a girl on the run, too. Today, I'm here to tell you about Riverview GE. We did our first news program where we shared information about the week and upcoming events this year. A few years ago, we did an entrepreneur fair run by the students. Today, some people in math GE are learning Python, which is a coding language. Last year, the GE reading put on a play. We started the play from scratch in our minds. We wrote and performed it. It was presented in front of first grade, fourth grade, and kindergarten. It turned out to be an amazing play.
Good evening. My name is Kate Stevens, and I'm a sixth grader at Riverview PK through eight. I have participated in volleyball, basketball, and will be representing our school in golf this spring. I have been at Riverview since third grade when it opened. As student council members, we put together many fun activities for our school, including our annual RISE assemblies, our canned food drive competition, new student gift bags, our fundraiser selling holiday grams, and our amazing middle school dance. RISE assemblies. Every quarter, we put together assemblies to recognize those kids who have shown RISE and gone above and beyond. RISE is our school acronym that stands for resilience, integrity, supportive, and engaged. Each quarter, we give out either a resilience, integrity, supportive, or engaged award to our elementary students. And for middle school, we give out one award to one student in the grade for showing all of RISE. The elective teachers give out, the elective teachers do the same as the elementary students and give out one award. Canned food drives. During the holiday season, we put on a little competition for our school to see who could support those in need of food during the holiday season and donate many food products. We buddy upgrades for the competition. So for example, our raptor kindergartners can still participate, but they may not bring in as many cans. So we buddy them up with our eighth grade raptors. The two grades with the most food at the end of the competition will win a prize. New student gift bags. As a part of student council, we put together many fun, welcoming, and cool gift bags that we hand out to our new students when they join Riverview. Inside the bag, we include a fun purple pencil, a cool purple, a cool purple space sensory squishy ball, a list of what to expect at Riverview, a purple bracelet, and a Riverview sticker with our logo on it. Holiday grams. The week before winter break and the week of Valentine's Day, we sell little little cards with either with a candy cane for Christmas or a fun Valentine pencil for Valentine's Day. We sell them for one dollar Monday through Thursday in our cafeteria, then pass them out on Fridays. Our middle school dance. Every spring, we host a middle school spring dance. The middle school student council members plan, set up, and basically run the whole entire dance. Elementary student council members can still participate by selling concessions. The middle school dance is one of our biggest fundraisers of the year.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth from fifth grade, and I want to thank everyone for listening to our presentation about Riverview and our perspectives about Riverview.
Board members, do any of you have questions? We learned a lot about Riverview. Stay up here, you guys. Got to have a picture with you in a minute, too. Any questions? Okay, Nancy?
I was just curious on the Give Next, which is a great program. What is your goal that you want to beat?
I wasn't really on Give Next last year, so I don't specifically know what the goal was last year, because we kind of changed our Give Next person. So I know it's over 20,000.
Oh, wow.
And we're probably going to beat that. We're still trying to earn money this year. We're close enough.
And then for the entrepreneur fair, is there going to be students that actually? Oh, that's that'll be really cool.
We were thinking to have each grade make something and then sell it at the entrepreneur fair. It's like an entire school thing. So we're having everyone. It's like an entire school thing, so we're having everyone help with it.
Awesome. So you'll invite us all so we can buy things?
Sure, if you want to come. You got a big money, though.
All right. Let's have you get up on the riser for me real quick. And then can we have the back row, everyone slide this way a little bit so we can get Dawn and Stu in here better? You guys got a lot of people. Okay. I think we're pretty good. You can slide this way a little bit, Dawn, in between. There you go, just like that. Okay, ready? On three. One, two, three. Good, thank you.
All right, our next item of business would be our board committee reports. And so I'm going to start right over here with Denise. And if you have a report, will you share it? If not, just say, "I don't have a report tonight." That's okay. We've had a lot of fun tonight so far.
I'll just keep my report, Nathan, short. I've had the opportunity on Amy's behalf to attend the SEAC session this last week and learn more about what's going on with our Special Education Advocacy Group. And just really nice to be learning more about that part of our service offering here at Thompson and the people that are working to make sure that our students in Special Education are having the experience they need to have. So, thank you. Nice and short today because I know we are.
Right, Alexander?
I attended the Joint Insurance Committee meeting last week where it was a big topic of discussion was about the health insurance renewal rates for coming in July. Unfortunately, we, as our district, and all of the members of the CEBT, our collaborative group that we're a part of that funds our insurance, our expenditures have outmatched our contributions over the last year or so. And so our renewal rates are going up a fair amount. We'll hear more about it, I think, maybe next meeting. Will it be the official presentation? But in order to meet the needs of our employees and make sure that they continue to be insured, we're going to have to up our contribution to the insurance to make sure that the trust remains solvent and everybody can continue to receive the healthcare they need. So it was not very happy meeting, but a very interesting meeting for sure.
Thank you. Nancy?
I'm going to share information about a community issue. In January, there was a federal court that vacated the 2024 rules for Title IX made by the Biden administration. And the Title IX rules are to be rolled back to the previous 2020 rule based on it exceeded authority to include gender identity with the standard on the basis of sex. Ignoring fundamental biological truths between the two sexes deprives women and girls of meaningful access to educational facilities and violates the First Amendment by requiring educators to use names or pronouns for chosen gender. This should nullify House Bill 241039. On February 5th, an executive order was issued. Keeping men out of women's sports was issued and in part says, "Educational institutions receiving federal funds cannot deny women an equal opportunity to participate in sports." It also directs, "Rescind all funds from educational programs that deprive women and girls of fair athletic opportunities, which results in the endangerment, humiliation, and silencing of women and girls and deprives them of privacy." So why is this district forcing girls varsity basketball teams to play against other districts that have boys on girls' teams? We are in direct violation of the Presidential Executive Order and the court who overturned Biden's Title IX changes. Is this worth losing funding and harming girls in sports? We must recognize gender dysphoria is a mental health condition and children who are experiencing this disorder do not need radical gender-affirming care. What they need is medical and mental health care directed by their parents. We must stop allowing children to be exploited by radical gender ideology activists and we must protect girls in sports and allow them to achieve their dreams. So when is this board going to direct staff to change our policies to comply with Title IX and the executive order of February 5th? When are we going to stop the insanity of the dangerous radical gender ideology? When?
Stu?
Well, as your representative on Casby's Legislative Relations Committee, I want to bring you up to date on three bills. And I'll have a longer report and one in writing when we have our study session in a couple of weeks. Those of you who are sitting up here with me on the dais, as well as many of you in the audience, remember a couple or three years ago when Colorado voters passed a measure to provide what was called universal school meals. It was a very popular initiative when it was first introduced. It has become a very expensive initiative to be able to fund. Last year, I believe $100 million was put into making that voter initiative become a reality. They realized partway through that they didn't have enough money. It ended up being $156 million. And so the state legislature is currently working on how they're going to fund this, if they're going to limit, for example, perhaps taking high school students out of the mix in terms of who's entitled to the universal free meal. Money is tight, and so that's something that they're working on. Also, at the study session, you as a board, I was out of town, but you as a board talked about the communication devices in schools measure. Thought I'd bring you up to date. I had a meeting with the Planning Committee of Casby the other day. And it appears now that there is... Oh, I'm sorry. All right. It appears that there is considerable interest in really loosening what initially was supposed to be some fairly strong guidelines in terms of what that self-own policy would be and perhaps even allowing districts to develop a policy based on their own guidelines. This is one that is interesting, I know, to the public. It's interesting to our board and to other boards. And I will certainly keep you up to date on that as time goes on. And then the last one that I'll talk about tonight very quickly is Senate Bill 25153, which is entitled Public School Financial Reporting Requirements. There's interest on the part of some legislators to increase reporting mandates, to ask boards to report even more than they currently are. At this point, the Casby Board has taken a position of opposed to this. I think we all know that there's a lot of reporting that's already going on. Staffs in financial services are limited in terms of number of people and amount of time. And so this is another one that I will keep all of you posted on.
I was unable to attend my two committees this session. Thank you to Denise and to Dawn for taking my place, the committees. But I would like to share, I would like to acknowledge the recent executive orders that have raised concerns and questions within our Thompson School District community. I recognize the fear and uncertainty that many are feeling. I stand firmly committed to fostering a school district where every individual feels valued, safe, and included. Education is a fundamental right, and I believe that a strong, thriving public school system is essential to the success of our community and our nation. That success depends on creating an environment that is free of discrimination, harassment, and bullying for our students, staff, and families. I believe deeply that every student, staff, and family in TSD deserves to feel safe and welcome regardless of immigration status, national origin, background, ability, race, creed, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, religion, ancestry, family composition, or physical characteristics. I want to ensure that our district remains a place where each individual feels valued and supported. I want TSD to maintain an inclusive, equitable, and safe learning environment for all. Please know that I take this to heart. These values of inclusivity and safety have and will continue to guide me as I vote on policies.
I just wanted to give a quick update. Family Pi this month, I got to attend, which is super fun. Got to learn about active supervision training and the community assessment that's coming up soon. So lots of people in our community have a chance to give feedback on early childhood in our community. And then in all of the committees that I attended, there were questions of varying levels of really what a lot of these things that we're hearing about politicization in our schools is going to mean to our schools and what the funding freeze and things like that mean. And so far, it's just important to know that not a single law has changed. And many things look very different as they go through the process because this is a process of representative government where laws aren't just made by one entity. And so, you know, it's very early to know what proposed changes will look like when they become actual law. And so it's obviously quite interesting. I know some people who've said that they don't keep cable, they just pay attention to the news because it is entertaining. However, at this point, you know, no laws have changed and no funding has changed. And everything that we're hearing might happen is probably going to look very different as it becomes a part of the process of our system as it exists today. So I just wanted to pass that along, hearing that from all of the people who know what they're talking about.
Thank you. I'm going to report about Thompson Education Foundation. It's a very busy, very active committee, and it's one that really supports a lot of our students as well as our staff within the district. And one of the things that's coming up is they have an event called Project Prom. And if you have or know of students who would be wanting to go to the prom this spring and they can't afford to get appropriate attire, they have men's clothing, they have prom dresses. But they're also still looking for donations. And so if you check at the Thompson Education Foundation website, it tells you exactly where. I know one of them is at the Ace Hardware Store in Loveland. They were collecting some of the prom dresses. Another event is, the nominations are closed, but the event is being planned so that the... Last year, we had it as a breakfast. I'm drawing a blank on what it's called, but the breakfast that we have where we celebrate our Educators of the Year. There we go. It's going to be an evening event. And it's an after-school evening. It's April 22nd. And it will be a time where we also are going to celebrate retirements for the district. So we're doing a combination event April 2nd, which will cover both of those activities. So be watching for information about each of those. And I think that concludes our board committee reports. And we're moving over to public comment. And I'm going to ask Dawn to please read the statement aloud that goes with, and then you'll get to run our little machine.
All right, because the board wants to hear the viewpoints of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, it will schedule time during its regular board meetings for brief comments and questions from the public. The board will set a time for public participation prior to the business portion of the meeting. The time for each speaker will be limited to three minutes and each individual will only be recognized once. If there are a large number of speakers, the board may elect to take comments for one hour before the business meeting and conclude public comment after the business meeting. Public comments and questions at a regular meeting may deal with any topics related to the board's conduct of the schools. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concern them but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Personnel matters will be discussed in executive session. When you start speaking, the green light will go on over here. And there is a countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, it's going to give you a yellow light. And then it'll start beeping at you and it won't stop with a red light when you're done. First up, we have Amy Zwollen.
Good evening. I wanted to express my heartfelt gratitude for your commitment to creating an inclusive environment for all students, particularly those who are transgender. I have a transgender child in TSD right now. And I do not normally speak of this publicly or openly. But taking into consideration our current political climate, I feel that something needs to be said. These children, including my own child, are too important and they need voices. They are not children that are going to come up here and talk and take pictures. The policies of TSD not only affirm the identities of these students but also foster a sense of belonging and safety within our schools. This was incredibly helpful for my child and my family as we navigated these unfamiliar waters. So thank you for your dedication to equality and for ensuring that every student can thrive. And just for the record, my child does have physical care through a doctor. They have mental health care through a therapist. What they need is support and inclusion and not judgment and hate. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm very sorry you had to hear what was said tonight. Next, we have David Cook.
David Cook, I've been here before. I'm with the Center for Government Accountability. Just want to update you on a few things. Yesterday, the president signed an order that pulls the funding from all of this craziness that's going on out there. And we all know what that is. It's going to go farther along than that. You have a sheet up there, there in the backside of it. It explains the foundation of this nation, the problem we have in schools today. Of the 40 nations that measure academic achievement, the United States used to be number one. Now it's number 40. We are the worst when it comes to academic achievement. We are the top when it comes to money per pupil. So why is that? Well, it's very simple. We went away from what made the best students. Today, we have to import people for the top positions in many, many companies because we can't find anybody in our school systems that can hack it. It's that simple. There's more to it than that, of course. But I won't go into the details right now. The point is, it's got to be changed and we have a president that is going to change it. He's eliminating, or will eliminate, after Doge goes through it and finds all of the bad things that have been done in the education system, the abuse, so on and so forth. Once that's done, the Education Department will be eliminated at the federal level. The Center for Government Accountability will be working with them to go over the material I've talked about before. The fact that these schools are not educating anymore, obviously. They're indoctrinating in leftist and Marxist programs. they're indoctrinating in leftist and Marxist programs. That's not my opinion, that's a proven fact. Consequently, these foolish programs are going to be eliminated, and the money to fund them will be eliminated if the president and those of us who have some influence here, which we do, can handle it. However, either way, whether it's done by the government or it's done by the citizens, the declaration makes it very clear that if any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it's the right of the people alter and abolish the individual.
Sue Tumer.
Your time is up.
Great.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Schaefer. My name is Sue Tumer. I am an educator of middle school gifted students and also a part-time president of the Thompson Education Association. I am personally alarmed at the state of education funding in Colorado. As you all know, the Colorado Legislature has been balancing the state budget on the backs of our students. Despite constitutional requirements to ensure adequate school funding, for more than a decade, the legislature utilized a budget stabilization factor, which effectively withheld adequate funding from districts. Last year, when this BS factor was finally bought down and schools were fully funded at 1989 levels, there were promises made that we would not return to the budget stabilization factor. As you also surely remember, there was a special session last year in which new school funding formula was introduced and quickly passed. Realizing there would be winners and losers in this new calculation, educators were promised the new formula would not be implemented until there were adequate funds. Fast forward to the 2025 legislative session where the state is, is short an estimated $1.2 billion. While not calling another budget stabilization, the governor's proposing doing away with averaging and determining district student numbers, something that's estimated to hurt 80% of the districts across Colorado. Oh yes, and he's pushing a new school funding formula to be implemented this year despite promises made less than a year ago. The Colorado Educational Association experts who've studied the primary budget proposal believe this will cost Thompson School District more than $800,000. C D E recently released two adequacy studies confirming what educators have long known, Colorado's underfunding students by $4,000 to $4,500 per student each year, totaling $4 billion shortfall. And that was before the cuts. No matter what it's called, a cut is a cut. I urge you as a collective school board and as individual members to reach out to Colorado legislators and let them know this is not acceptable for students in Thompson schools. Let the budget be balanced by cuts elsewhere, not again on the backs of our students. I invite you to join with T E A, C E A, and individuals across the state who care about public education for a rally at the state Capitol on Thursday, March 20th. Fortunately, this is during our spring break, though we won't have to close the Thompson schools. Additionally, I encourage you to send a letter on behalf of the board, letting our elected officials know your objection. Tell them, no cuts, no way, no how. Thank you.
I believe we have five, four, five, um, call-ins.
Hello, my name is Katie Steber. I currently live in Loveland, Colorado, and have a student that does attend school at Irwin. I have been a active member of the SAC Committee and P T O at Irwin and volunteer on a regular basis. I have observed a staffing change coming into this school year in the leadership team. I have been very pleased in what I have personally witnessed that this leadership team is bringing to the table. I do want to call out the principal as well in stating that I have witnessed really connecting with students, adults in the children's lives, and really making an effort to bring her staff team together. I do want to also comment that my student has been very pleased personally, as well as a multitude of her friends, that she is also very pleased with leadership, the principal, and how the school year is progressing. I will be brief, and there is contact information for myself there at T S D as I am on the Safety Committee and the D A C Committee as well. I thank you for your time, and I just want to stress that I am more than thrilled with the current leadership at Irwin Middle School. Thank you.
Dr. Schaefer, President Cruz, board members and staff, my name is Ann Bradbury. I have lived in Loveland for over 33 years. My topic is patriotism in education. Patriotism is defined as love and devotion to God and country. I am proud to be a part of Patriot Grandmas, a group of grandmas led by Sharon Penny. We love God, our country, our families, including our awesome grandchildren, and our community. We have a passion for the future generations, including the students in our school district. I want to respond to two articles from last week in the Reporter Herald. The first one was written by Mark Schaefer, Superintendent, and Stu Boyd, Board of Education Member. The main points included being in favor of providing an excellent education for all students. However, there were no specifics on how and what can be done to accomplish this. Sharon Penny wrote a rebuttal to their editorial. She mentioned specifics that parents and grandparents want to know about D E I, C R T, transgender issues, and boys playing in girls' sports. Why haven't these issues been addressed? Sharon expressed her thoughts very clearly. I walk side by side with Sharon in our Patriot Grandma Group. Currently, this school's culture puts stress on so many students. Mental health is a huge issue with students right now. Chaos and confusion do not make for a healthy school environment. Test scores are low, Niche.com shows proficiency in reading at 45%, and math proficiency is at 31%. Once the school district gets back to teaching more core curriculum in D E I, C R T, and other negative issues disappear, schools, scores will go up, students will be confident and motivated again. I heard President Trump signed an executive order eliminating D E I in all schools. Deadline is less than two weeks away. If our school district doesn't eliminate D E I, then federal funding can be halted. I am assuming T S D will honor this request by the federal government. Another executive order signed by President Trump is to keep boys out of girls' sports. This order just makes sense. Life at T S D is about to turn the current chaos into a healthier school setting. Better education gives students a chance for a bright future. Let's return to common sense, education, and patriotism. If you need to contact me, you may leave a message at 970-775-2676. Thank you for your...
Good evening, Madam President, T S D Board Directors, Dr. Schaefer, staff, and fellow citizens. Lori Goble, T S D Tax Paying Citizen. My topics this evening are the behavior and language of board directors and discrimination of female athletes. First, before I address these two topics, I would like to thank those who come fully prepared to these meetings and study sessions. I know that it requires time and effort to be informed on agenda items, but for those who are doing their job, I want to offer and extend a heartfelt thank you. Item one, behavior and language of directors. I attended the January study session, which focused heavily on the audit. It was during that meeting that Director Kirk utilized an expletive during her comments regarding the audit. This took me totally by surprise. This was not during a heated debate about a divisive topic, but simply during her comments regarding the audit. What took me by greater surprise is that she did not apologize, and she was not called out on this behavior. Is this typical of study sessions? Your inaction makes it appear this way. In light of this, one must also ask, is this the type of language that's being promoted within the walls of our schools? I was hopeful that this would have been addressed at the January meeting, however, it was not. I'm asking for an apology to the public from Director Kirk regarding this very unprofessional behavior, and also an apology from President Cruz for not holding Director Kirk responsible for her language or holding the meeting decorum to professional standards. Item two, T S D discrimination against female athletes. This is something that I've spoken to you about previously and something that you continue to ignore. I'm passionate about this because of the opportunities that my sister and nieces were able to participate in. They and other female student athletes are afforded opportunities for higher education due to their dedication and proficiency in their respective sports, not so if they are beat up in their sport by a biological male. Biological males have no place on a female sports team and have no place competing against biological females, no matter the age. Time and again, we hear of injuries, many that are serious in nature perpetrated by biological males. Our daughters, granddaughters, and nieces all deserve to be protected from harm and injury. On top of that, there is the theft of awards and records designated for female athletes, which should only go and which only belong to biological females. Things are changing at the federal level and will be required to be changed at the district level. You need to make the appropriate policy changes sooner rather than later. I look forward to your prompt action on this item and keeping men and boys sports for biological males and keeping women and girls' sports for biological girls. Thank you for your time and attention to these matters.
I am Lori Vista Ward, 501 West Ford Street, Loveland. My email is Lori H Ward at M S N dot com. Madam President, board members, and Dr. Schaefer, I'm calling to address the recent executive actions by Mr. Trump relating to education. First, the cancellation of hundreds of contracts at the Institute of Education Sciences chills the collection of data that allows us to understand student learning. Without the ability to identify achievement gaps and pursue innovation and excellence in schools, we put our international competitiveness and national security at extreme risk. Next, executive actions targeting equity and inclusion policies will harm the abilities of schools to support students with both physical and intellectual disabilities. Programs to assist these students as they move from high school into the world of work have already been flashed in some districts. Other executive actions removing protections for immigrant students and adults in schools have instilled terror in employees, parents, and kids alike. These newcomers to our country, whether documented or not, are afraid to come to school where they could be caught up in immigration enforcement. English-language learner policies are already being investigated, and bullying of these students has caused at least one 12-year-old to kill herself. Some of you have written public letters supporting our students who are differently abled, L G B T Q plus, or are immigrants, but that is not enough. You must remain steadfast in the work you've been doing and continue to serve all students and keep all students and employees safe. Do not give in to fear or anticipatory compliance. The actions of the new federal government are already hurting our most vulnerable students. You have more support in this community than you realize. It is up to you to protect public education. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brenda Hattaberry, and I live in Loveland. My family has been here for five generations, from my grandparents to my grandchildren, and all part of the Thompson School District. I'd like to address that on Friday, in a memo from Craig Trainer and the Department of Education, they gave an ultimatum to stop using racial preferences as a factor to help students. He said, and I quote, "That students should be assessed according to merit, accomplishment, and character." But then, in contradiction, he went on to advocate for preferential treatment for white and Asian students in his statements. So my question is, why is he saying that simply being white or Asian is merit if they have already claimed that racism in any form simply due to a student's race is discrimination? This means the Trump administration is forcing schools to discriminate based on the race they choose, just like before Brown v. Board of Education. So far, no discrimination laws have changed at the state or federal level, so today, this memo is telling schools to break state and federal laws. I did look at the stats in today's agenda and saw that white and Asian students consistently have the highest grad rates in Thompson School District. They do seem to be doing just fine. Illegally discriminating against the students of all other races won't help Thompson School District have higher graduation rates and test scores. In fact, I contend, racism hurts us all, even us white people. I would like to end by extending kudos to the amazing students, teachers, staff, and to the six school board members that have consistently worked for all of the students in our district. Every one of you deserve applause for your hard work and accomplishments, especially for those graduation rates. Those were pretty astounding. Thank you all.
That concludes public participation. All right. Move on. We'll move on to action consent items, and these are items that we had presented to us at a previous meeting or study session and involve items that just need to be approved. I'm going to read through the whole list of what we have. We also have a gift and donation to be read, as well as a resolution to be done, and then a proclamation. And then I'll ask if anybody asked, do you have anything you want removed that we should be finding? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start, and then we'll have those two things read, okay? 6.1 is the approval of personnel, extra duty, and coaching recommendations. 6.2, the approval of expenditures over $50,000. 6.3, approval of gifts and donations. 6.4 is the approval of the second reading policy, G B I, criminal history record information. 6.5, approval of termination of memorandum of understanding, M O U, with some stone contract. And then 6.6, the approval of proclamation of National School Counselor Week. So I'm going to turn to, who's reading the donations? Oh, okay, I'm going to have Alexandra read the donations, and then we'll have Amy read the proclamation.
There are a number of donations today which we are grateful for. School Board Policy states that gifts donations over $1,000 need to be approved by the Board of Education. And so we have, I believe, five, four, four, well, six of those today. Number one, a $1,000 donation to be used for the STEM X program at Walt Clark Middle School from Bryan and Company. Number two, a $4,114 donation to be used for the STEM X program at Walt Clark Middle School from Live, Laugh, Love, Believe Incorporated. Number three, a $1,400 donation to be used for the greenhouse at Walt Clark Middle School from Live, Love, Laugh, Believe Incorporated. Number four, a $1,500 donation to be used to support the STEM E L initiatives at Big Thompson Elementary School from Platte River Power Authority. Number five, a donation of a bass instrument with bow and case valued at $5,000 to be used in orchestra class at Berthold High School from Wyland Fourmeller. And number six, a donation of 30 Dell Latitude 5430 Chromebooks valued at $4,979.70 to the district from Banner Health.
National School Counseling Week proclamation. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas, school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas, school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas, school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas, comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of educational process that enables all students to achieve success in schools. Therefore, the Thompson School District is hereby proclaim February 3rd through 7th, 2025, as National School Counseling.
2025, as National School Counseling Week.
Thank you, Amy. I'm going to ask if any board members have any items they wish to speak to or to have removed from this list and moved to the other next item. Nobody? Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the action consent items as one measure.
So move.
Thank you. Stu?
Second.
And Dawn seconded it. Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd?
Aye.
Denise Chapman?
Aye.
Amy Doran?
Aye.
Dawn Kirk?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Alexandra Lessum?
Aye.
Nancy Rumpel?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes, and so we have those all set. All right, we will move now into discussion items. So we'll start with eight point one, which is graduation rates and midyear data update. And it'll be Dr. Schneider introducing.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Schaefer. Tonight, the Learning Services Division brings to you our annual update on graduation rates, dropout rates, and midyear I Ready data. So we have some more celebrations to talk about again this year, so that's always nice. And I'm going to introduce to you Mr. Theo Robison, our Executive Director of Secondary Education, and Ms. Carrie Bartman, our Director of Assessment and Evaluation, who will share this presentation.
Greetings, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. I'm Theo Robison, the Executive Director of Secondary Education, and we're here tonight to do a presentation pertaining to our graduation rates, dropout rates, and our middle-of-the-year I Ready data. So our focus area, one student achievement. Tonight, we will share with you our 2024 graduation and dropout rate data and our 25 middle-of-the-year I Ready rate assessment data. This presentation will illustrate our successes and opportunities for continued growth, as well as current work taking place to further support increasing graduation rates and student outcomes. So on this first slide, what you're able to see here is our four-year graduation rate, which means students receiving a regular diploma in four years or less when they enter high school. This is also known as our anticipated year of graduation, which is considered an A Y G. And here, you're able to see that our current graduation rate for the 23-24 school year was 80% while the state's was at 84.2%. On this slide, you're able to see that our graduation rate for our males is higher than the state's average by 6.8%, and our female graduation rate is higher than the state by 4.9%. We also see a disparity in our female to male graduation rate by 2.9%. Within this bar graph, I would like you to see that we've increased our graduation rates for American Indian or Native American students and our Asian students, and we saw some decreases over the last year in our white, Hispanic, or Latino, Black, and African American or two or more races. Within these bar graphs, I would like you to see that we have increased our graduation rate for our English learners, our gifted and talented learners. However, we've seen some decreases in our highly mobile students and our students with In these graphs, we're able to see that our graduation rate gains were at Berthold High School, Loveland High School, and Loveland Classical Charter School. At Thompson Valley High School and in Mountain View High School, we saw some graduation rate decreases. I would also like to point out an astounding 11.6% graduation rate increase for Ferguson High School, our one alternative school. Next, we're going to transition into our dropout rates. Here, you're able to see that we've had three straight years of dropout rate decreases, and we're still below the state's average by 0.6%. To give you a little bit more details about what this rate is measuring, it's when our students enter seventh through 12th grade and a dropout is a student who leaves our school without enrolling into another school or an education program. Here, we see our dropout rate is lower than the state average for males and for females. Also, we're able to see a 4.4 decrease in our male dropout rate from 23 to 24 school year, and we also see a 0.2 decrease in our female dropout rate. Next, we're able to see a decrease in our dropout rate in all race categories except for our American Indian or Alaskan Native. And we also saw an increase of 3.6% within one student group specific, and that is our American Indian or Alaskan Native. Here, we're able to see some continued work that we need to do to further support our students who are English learners. Here, we see a 0.5% increase in that rate, and we've seen decreases in all other student At this time, I would like to point out that T S D's dropout rate has decreased by 0.4%. T V H S saw a decrease in their dropout rate by 0.9%, and Mountain View saw a decrease by 0.1, or I'm sorry, by 1.4%. As we currently reevaluate our credit recovery, unit recovery programs in our district and look at different platforms based on teacher and student feedback, we expect to continue to see our dropout rate decrease over time. And in addition to that, as our counselors and school staff work further to help our students transition to our Ferguson Option Program, that will also help us decrease our dropout rates over time as well. Next up is Carrie Bartman, our Director of Assessment and Evaluation, to share with you our middle-of-the-year I Ready assessment results.
Thanks, Theo. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Schaefer. I am Carrie Bartman, Director of Assessment and Evaluation. So what does this mean for us? Every August, our district is given a district performance framework, as well as each school in our district gets a school performance framework on how we're accredited by the state. So each of these numbers that Theo just represented for us tonight for each student in our district is calculated into this district performance framework for us. This year, we were 60.9%, and we were again in performance for the state of Colorado. On the next slide, on the post-secondary workforce readiness, this is where these school dropout rates, as well as graduation rates, will be calculated for this coming school year. So all the rates that you just saw, we will be measured on all of those this coming school year, and we will see those show up on this district performance framework this coming August. How else are we measured? It is by our student achievement and our student growth through our C Mass scores, as well as P S A D and S A T. And so how we measure our predictions for how we're going to perform this coming April is through our I Ready diagnostic. So next, we have our middle-of-year I Ready K eight data. Kindergarten through eighth grade take our I Ready assessment three times a year. We had them take this right before holiday break. To give you an idea of how we place students, we have two levels of green where students are performing at mid or above grade level or early on grade level. One grade level below in yellow at middle-of-year still gives students time by the end of the school year to be on grade level. So right now, they might be performing slightly under, but they can get there with typical growth by the end of the school year. Then in red and slight pinkish color, we have two grade levels below and three grade levels below, as you're looking at the graphs moving forward. We're going to start with reading tonight. So this is our achievement data. Where are we landing as a school, as a district, K eight across the board? So from last winter to this winter, we have 7,571 students that took the middle-of-year diagnostic, and this is where we are landing percentile-wise. We split that apart for you, K five, as well as six through eight. Our K five data shows how many students took that middle-of-year diagnostic at the bottom there. Our three-year trend data from 2022, 2023, and 2024, I Ready has now re-normed all of their data to 22, 23 school year. We no longer have the pre-pandemic rating from 18, 19. We have three years of trend data now, post-pandemic, that we are rated on, and they renationally normed all of those diagnostics for us. Here is our middle school reading data. Those were the achievement slides. Now you're going to look at a growth slide. Here you have a four quadrant chart that assesses high performance and high growth. We want to see our grade levels in the upper right-hand quadrant, in the high performance and high growth area for reading. As you can see, the majority of our grade levels fall in that. The next quadrant that we're looking at is that high-growth, low-performance, which is the upper-left quadrant. You can see seventh grade falls into that and is very close to also in the high-performance side. This means those seventh graders are growing very well. The achievement part isn't there yet. And if you remember, I know I've talked about this many times now, growth precedes achievement. The dash line is a little bit misleading. This is where we hope students are after 14 to 16 weeks, in between their beginning-of-year and middle-of-year. If you actually look at the diagram, at 50% or better, that's where everyone is supposed to be. If our students are achieving typical growth, which is one year of growth, we're hoping they're at that 68% dashed line there. But as you can see, each grade level is actually above the 50%, which is measuring well. All of the grade levels you see above the dashed line actually could be achieving at stretch growth, which is one to two years of growth, not just our typical annual yearly growth. So switching over to math, the slides are the exact same. Here is where we are, three-year trend data post-pandemic. I broke it apart for you as well. Kindergarten through fifth grade and elementary, you see the number of students that took that assessment over winter or right before winter break, as well as our middle school Same slide, math is a lower threshold of the percentile. We're looking for 56th percentile just because of the new norming. If you'll recall, in the fall when I met with you, even the state of Colorado re-normed P S A D and S A T math for us this last year. We're still noticing math is a little bit further behind than reading, just nationally. And so that typical year growth is sitting at about 56th percentile. But again, if you notice, anything above 50 is where our students receiving typical growth should be at this point in time. Each of our grade levels falls into high performance, high growth, and sixth and seventh grade are in the high growth, which is what we want to be seeing at this point in the year, and the achievement hopefully will follow. So our high schoolers, what do we do now for P S A D and S A T? So in the fall, our students took a practice test in illuminate DNA. This gave teachers the ability to see where students' skills actually were. And so teachers received that feedback, gave an idea of what standards and different things needed to be hit throughout the school year. And now, on Monday, March 3rd, students will actually go into the Blue Book system, which is the testing system that they now take P S A D S A T on and do a full practice test. So all of our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors on March 3rd will run a full practice test with accommodations for students that are offered accommodations. This is when they will also apply to their scores, if they wish, to the four colleges of their choice, and run through all of the pre-work needed before our actual test date on April 16th. Freshmen, sophomores, and juniors will take the official P S A D S A T test on that day, and that is in our window for testing assessment for the school year. Our third grade through eighth graders will take their C Mass assessments, starting the first week of April and ending the last week of April. One change this year is that the state has now re-entered C Mass Social Studies, and so fourth grade and seventh grade get to take one additional section of a C Mass Social Studies assessment. It is a third of our buildings this year. The second third will go next year, the third third will go the following year, and then we will see if it's everyone taking that one session of C Mass Social Studies after that. Fifth, eighth, and 11th grades continue with C Mass Science as usual. Does the Board of Education have any questions for us?
Questions, board members.
Yeah, so when you talked about dropout rates, where do homeschoolers fall?
When we talk about dropout rates.
Like, so if they start seventh through 12th grade with us, and they go into homeschooling, would they count as a dropout or not because they're going into a program?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay. And I had another one, and it just left me, so.
They would be undated, they are undated separately, and so they are not considered a dropout in that way.
First of all, and Theo, I think this is a question for you, how many students graduated in 2024 from Loveland Classical?
Thirty kids.
Thirty?
Thank you, Carrie.
All right.
Should we write those numbers today?
I'm sorry?
It's thirty.
Thirty kids.
Thirty students graduated last spring.
Yeah.
All right. Compared with our smallest high school, traditional high school, which is Berthold High, about 160, 170?
Somewhere.
All right? So a fractional percentage, okay? Why is there no dropout data for L C S?
They have not had a dropout.
Correct. It is 0.0% and has been the last three years.
They have had no dropouts. Thanks, Carrie, for answering the questions that I submitted to you ahead of time. I was interested to hear that you don't have pre-pandemic performance data, that only since the pandemic do we now have that. And thank you for explaining slides 19 and 23 for reading and math. I now understand those two slides. Do all 11th graders in the district take the S A T? Yes. And is there an S A T practice test as well? There is.
That is what they're doing on March 3rd.
All right. My last question is, you previously gave the board a handout entitled "Percent of 12th graders Receiving Specific Diploma Types Over the Past Four Years Per High School." I don't need a breakdown by school unless you feel knowing this is helpful to the district. By the way, to my board colleagues, I did submit this question. But I wonder what percentage of students who graduated with a 20-credit diploma had at least 22 credits?
That's a great question.
Do you have that?
So we are running those numbers right now.
Okay.
The data that you received in the previous study session, and I believe that was Andy Stevens and Tiffany Jones that brought that to you, that is the accurate data from this past school year, this last graduating class. We have to change and alter to the 22-credit because what we ran for you at that point in time was how many graduated at 20, how many graduated at 24, and how many graduated with distinction. So we have to go back through our infinite campus system and see how many of those 20 credits actually had 22. So that's going to take us a little bit of time.
So at some point, you will be able to report that to the board, either in a presentation or in writing?
Either way, whatever you would prefer.
All right, fine. And then, Madam President, if you'll indulge me, no more questions, just four observations as I went through the data. The dropout rate continues to drop overall, and that's great. The dropout rate for subgroups also dropped or is relatively constant. That's outstanding. Our students meet expectations in reading and writing, math, dropout rate, and graduation rate, according to the way that I read your data. Did I read it correctly? And then finally, interestingly enough, in Sunday's Reporter Herald, they have this every Sunday. There's a section called "This Week in History," and somebody sitting next to me just said, uh-huh, so somebody else saw this as well. Ten years ago, the Thompson School District graduation rate was 74%. Yes. Assuming that that data in the Reporter Herald was accurate, and I have no reason to think that it wasn't, Dr. Schaefer, what's our district-wide graduation rate right now?
Ninety percent.
So in 10 years, the graduation rate has improved from 74% to almost 91%, I think. So kudos, of course, first of all, to our students, to our staff, to our parents who support our students, and then to the community at large, not just for the graduation rate, but for the consistent improvement in these other areas that I just highlighted as well. So hats off to everybody I just mentioned.
I'll start with the graduation. And you already answered or asked about the 20-credit, so I'll skip that. But I was also wondering, so a year ago, Theo, I asked for remediation rates, and you had said you were working with someone, I can't remember, I think it was C S U. So I'm here a year later asking, do you have remediation rates?
So we can get that for you.
So we can get that for you for sure. And we probably get that within a week. We should be able to learn something more about that.
Oh, in about a week?
But I don't have that tonight.
Oh, okay, but you do have it now?
I could work on making sure I have that within a week. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, all right, thanks. And then on the iReady results, you know, to Stu's point, they are increasing. But I'm still concerned about for those that it isn't. Because when you just run the numbers, don't just look at the percent. Look at the students. K through eight, there's 909 students that are currently three-plus grades below reading. To me, that that's a problem. But I also looked at the fourth-grade students that are below, you know, two or three grade levels below. And then I looked at the prior year for third grade. So you can see that the number of fourth graders actually increased in those two buckets. But it also, to me, that shows that the kids that are doing well are still doing well and achieving well. But there's still this bucket that, you know, last year they were third grade. They weren't reading at grade level. And in fourth grade, they still aren't. And then when you look at fourth-grade math, it goes into supporting why you have some of the numbers that we have in fourth-grade math not being proficient. So I know it's not, it's like to use Dr. Schaefer's term, like where he always likes, we're solving for world peace. But what is the plan? If we see that last year, we know, like this year, what what are we going to do for next year? Because once they leave elementary school, that's that's my real worry is that if they, once they leave elementary school and they can't read and they can't do math, then it's just, I think it's a it's a situation we can't recover from, and that worries me.
Absolutely. So we still have a focus on all of our desegregated population. Our DUIP has specifically pointed out our multilingual learners and students with disabilities. We are currently in a curriculum adoption and piloting for our new elementary curriculum for reading and literacy. And so depending on what curriculum is chosen and the adoption and, you know, planning for that, all of those things are a focus on what you just said.
Is there ever, and I know again, it comes back down to money, but is there ever the thought that these particular schools that might have these students, that we need to put additional teacher supports there?
So I think a couple of things. So the board has really invested in us having professional learning communities. And so some of our work in our EC12 meetings over the last two years have been helping us better strengthen how to utilize professional learning communities within our schools to better target what intervention groups we need to have for students. And so between ensuring that we actually have curriculum, that's the rigor of the grade level standard, which Carrie just mentioned for the ELA adoption. And we just recently did a math adoption as well. But those investments, we expect to help minimize those gaps between student learning over time. So that's where our biggest investment is right now.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Nancy, I just want to make a statement too. Is when you say they can't read, that's not a true statement. They just aren't reading on grade level. And there's a difference because they can read. They just probably aren't reading at their current grade level. So there's a difference in that. So I just wonder, whenever you say it, you have that that tone. And it's just, it's not a fair statement for those kids.
If the student is three grades level below.
That doesn't mean they can't read. They probably can't read fast enough or whatever the assessment might be. So that doesn't mean they can't read. They can read, probably just not at their grade level.
Okay, it's still important.
So I have a couple of questions. As far as the graduation data, every year, Thompson Valley High School is quite a bit lower than the other traditional high schools. Are there thoughts about why that is and what can be done to help bring them up to be on par with everybody else?
So I will tell you, I've asked that question directly. And so what I think right now we saw was that during the pandemic, this class that we specifically looked, their graduation rate data for this year had a higher number of students that ended up going to school part-time. And so those students are still in the building, the majority of them, for a fifth-year senior. But one of the things too is that, I'm going to go back to something that I said a little bit earlier in the presentation is that we're currently re-looking at unit recovery system and credit recovery system across. And so we've kind of learned some of the things that we're seeing taking place at Ferguson that we could better generalize into other school dynamics. And so really anticipating what that adoption process is going to look like for our new credit recovery and curriculum across the system for that. But but another thing too that I want to tell you is that, so hopefully in a year, I'll be standing up here to tell you that Thompson Valley has over 90% graduation rate. Because as we look at the numbers right now, they're projected to be over 90%. And so hopefully, we'll finally cross that. But thank you for asking that question.
Okay, cool, thank you. And then I have a question for you too, Carrie. On the, all of the the data across the years from, you know, the past three years is basically the same from year to year. So if we're, you're saying that kids are in the like high growth and potentially high achievement, at what point should we see that translate into that these actually like changing?
Great question. So there are lots of different factors that can go into that depending on, one, your student group population is different, correct? Students move in and out, so you're always measuring different students. The achievement is measured all students. Your growth data is only those students that took the fall assessment and the winter assessment. So there are always going to be little caveats there that aren't in it. The new norms, I would say, in the next two years, we should be able to see it because we're just now based on the 22, 23 norms. And so hopefully, we'll start to see that shift upward from all of the growth that we're actually seeing. But again, we're brand new into these new norms. And so it's been pretty status quo the last three years on the achievement side.
Okay. So I remember, like often when we look at these charts, some of the ones that like jump off the page are often because our student groups are are small enough size, but big enough that they count, right? Like, I know they wouldn't even show up on here if they were small enough, but they might still only be 10 or 20 students, something like that. And yet, I just, it's some things have came up repeatedly before tonight and definitely tonight as far as different disaggregated groups of students. And so I'm a pragmatist. What if? Like, if we are saying that the the needs of different student groups, English-language learners and gifted and talented, special education, to just name a few. I mean, if we were to take them completely out of the data set, could we get to our 90% graduation rate in an average year? If we took out students who are non-white and non-Asian and who are not in any of our other disaggregated groups? I mean, that's hundreds of students, right?
Yes.
I mean, I realize it's like asking you to know some numbers off the top of your head and do math real quick. It's algebra even. But we're talking hundreds of students who fall into these groups that have been the subject of many of these conversations.
So so the thing that I'd like to say is that I think we've done a strong job in focusing on each learner across our school district. And one of the things that we find when you talk about N sizes, like I know specifically for our black student population, when we went back to try to track what happened with that going from 90% or 93% the previous year down to 50%, I recognized very quickly that that was eight students thanks to the help of Carrie Bartman here. And so then when I started to reach out to talk to some of those families, one of the things we learned is that one of the kiddos actually did graduate from another place, but our data was wrong. We also know that we have one of our high schools reaching out to that kiddo and their family to help get them caught up with Ferguson through the options program. So so we never, even though we see these numbers as final for the school year, we're still doing work to ensure that each one of our students get through our our system here in TSD with either a diploma or a GED. So so I really like the fact that we're consistently focusing on each student. And the journey doesn't stop once the data set ends for the year. We're constantly going back to work with those students and families.
I can attest to that. My oldest would not have graduated if it wasn't for a math teacher following up for two-plus years to say, you need one class and your diploma matters. There's no reason that they needed to do that, none. And, you know, I love I love good data. I love gold stars. You better believe I was an A student. I love good data.
And the reality is, one student can fit into many of these groups.
Yeah.
And that's something we need to keep in mind.
Right. And educating kids is what we're talking about. It doesn't always show up in the one day that we took the one test. Or I might, you know, be struggling, but that doesn't mean that I'm not working really hard to try to learn.
It is one data point and one day, depending on what's going on, 100%.
And also, these are rad numbers, especially compared to the graduation rate 10 years ago. And I would like to point out that I did not swear there, and I absolutely could have. So there we go.
Thank you, Don. All right, thank you, you too.
You're welcome.
All right, 8.2 is Cultural Climate Survey. Guthles.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer.
I'm sorry.
I'm right here. It's me again. And and another member of Learning Services Team, Dr. Jennifer Guthles, who has also gone through this data with you earlier this winter in two-plus-two sessions. And she is is coming back to give you highlights from that discussion. You probably recall much of what she has to say tonight, but she's going to highlight light it for the community tonight. So Jennifer?
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Excuse me. Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, thank you for having me tonight. Apologize, I'm getting over a little bit of a cold. So our annual climate and culture survey support focuses on things that touch on all areas of our strategic plan. I always like to highlight that the kind of more obvious things that people think of around, of course, our goals around inclusive and supportive culture are covered. But also, it can help us track if we are taking action in areas that can increase student achievement. We can keep track of things that can help us with our stewardship of resources as well as assist us with retaining critical human talent. This is the fifth full round of our annual climate and culture survey. And it was administered to all staff, students grades three and up, and then all families in November of 2024. Our survey is delivered electronically. We also do make it available to community members who not have students in our schools. And this was the first year, as I mentioned to you a couple of weeks ago, that we did not offer paper surveys because that need had dwindled to fewer than half a dozen, and it was very expensive. And we are pleased to see that even with making that change, actually, our family response rates went up this year. So we feel really good about the decision we made to save some money and still see some response rate improvements from our families. Just a reminder that our of our surveyed areas. So our student surveys, there are two categories, social-emotional learning competencies and supports and environments. Our competencies are the areas where students tell us their perceptions of their competencies related to social emotional skills, such as perseverance, social awareness, and so on. And the supports and environments are our students' perceptions of the supports around them to be successful in school. Our teachers take a specific set of teacher surveys, which is on this screen, and they're also part of the climate and culture survey. So they take a teacher self-reflection survey, which I think is a little more accurate if we think of it as a survey about self-efficacy. So their belief that they have the knowledge and skills to meet their students' needs. And then, of course, because they are expected to help us meet the SEL standards from the state of Colorado, we ask them about the professional learning they receive in order to do so. Then we survey all of our staff on staff leadership relationships, school safety, and school climate. And then on our family and community surveys, we ask them questions about what's going well in our school district, what would they rate as a priority, how safe do these schools, our schools, so on and so forth. So these are response rates from last fall and this fall. As you can see, our response rates are quite high. I did want to mention, it looks like, if you go down to where it says teacher SEL measures, and it looks like there was a drop in fall 2024. What that actually was is a glitch, unfortunate glitch in survey delivery, which is that Panorama sends out the links directly to staff so that it's recorded with their employee ID. That way, we can track response rates. And they accidentally only sent one of the surveys to our teacher, the second one, the climate and culture survey one, not the SEL one. And it's supposed to automatically take them to the SEL one, and it didn't. However, we have a lot of very smart staff, and they figured out that Mr. Hausmann had sent out a link for staff, and that's intended to be for staff who work at multiple sites and otherwise can't take it from multiple sites. So our staff, who couldn't get to the other survey, went and took it that way, which does not link to their ID, which therefore does not show up as a response rate. So their information is included as far as favorability, but they don't count as a percentage in there, which is very unfortunate. So of course, I was not thrilled with Panorama for that mistake. However, I would like to acknowledge that they fixed it within two hours of me notifying them. However, as you can tell, right, these numbers, quite a few staff members had already taken the survey at that point. So they assured me that that will not happen again. But as you can see, other than that glitch in record-keeping there, basically from Panorama's end, our response rates are very good. And in fact, every time I meet with Panorama, they're kind of amazed at our response rates. And so I'm very pleased with the work that our schools do to get our student response rates up. And as you all know, because I've been speaking about this for many years with you, we are keep trying to get those family numbers up. And we we did push them up just a little bit. And I would really like to acknowledge the help of our school staff in making it available during our family parent-teacher conferences and the support from quite a few members of ITS and other teams who were able to help us get that data in earlier so that families kind of access to that during parent-teacher conferences. I'm not going to go into detail on these two slides, but this is a reminder to anybody looking at our data that Panorama has a team that works very hard on ensuring validity and reliability of their surveys. And they had been studying student responses for several years, and it come to the conclusions that they needed to make some updates to the questions to make sure that they were clear and getting the best results possible. And we had the option to not make that change, which I don't think is much of an option because, of course, we want accurate results from our students. And so the caution is that, basically, we have a new baseline for our student surveys. And when we look at the results earlier, you'll note, I put little stars next to all of the areas that were impacted by these changes in questions. So we really need to think of it as a new baseline as opposed to, we can't really follow it the same way as we have in previous years from last year to this year. And I'll explain that a little bit more when we get closer. This is just more on that for those who would like to dig in. So this is just one way, one snapshot one snapshot of how to look at our student results. So you can see the top four areas, that's under the student competency section I mentioned, the bottom three are the supports and environments. And so blue indicates scores that are notably above the national average. Green is right around the national average. Orange is slightly below national average, and red is notably below the national average. You can see our elementary schools in the supports and environments have some really outstanding results. We can see that our school safety for our secondary students is doing well, when we think it from a national average perspective. We do continue to see these concerns in our secondary schools, teacher-student relationships, and sense of belonging. And then, as you can see, emotional regulation is now at the national average for all of our students, grades three through 12, and some work to be done in some of the other competency areas. This is a little bit of a breakdown where you can see this by elementary versus middle versus high, instead of just elementary versus secondary. And you can see the stars to remind us of the areas that are impacted by changes to survey questions. So when I was working with the Panorama team on understanding the changes because of the questions, what they explained to me is, first of all, that we were going to, they predicted that we'd see a significant drop in growth mindset scores. You can see that that's the case. And that any scores where we saw a drop, it was most likely attributable to the changes in questions, that we really now have a more accurate portrayal of what our students are thinking. And the areas that held steadier went up, we should see as a real celebration because that was indicating that even with a more accurate question set, we had better results. So you can take a look at this data from that lens. And then these are the supports and environments topic areas. And you can see sense of belonging and teacher-student relationships are both impacted by question changes. School safety was not. School safety has actually held pretty steady for quite some time. And then you can see that those changes as described. And I think the notable one here really is looking at that high school sense of belonging. This is an area that we've been very concerned about, and I will acknowledge 36% favorability is still not where we would like it to be. But this is the first time we've really seen movement there, and this is the second time we've seen some movement in the middle school sense of belonging. So we have plenty of room to grow with 36 and 43, but when you start to see movement in the right direction, that really helps us get that momentum going. And that's what we need to meet our students' needs. This year, we did challenge ourselves in Learning Services as well as our school leadership teams to look at data by student group. And so we set goals to say not just that overall elementary student groups would have high favorability rates and sense of belonging, but if we looked at each individual student groups, we would also see the same thing. And so I did kind of a checkpoint to see how a target we were to achieving that by the end of this school year. And the student groups closest to the goal for elementary students were multilingual students and our gifted and talented students. And the students for this, from that goal were our students qualifying for free reduced lunch. So that helps give us some places to learn from and also to focus for the rest of the school year. And then this is showing the same type of a goal before our secondary students. And so because that sense of belonging number was already lower, you can see that our goal is a little bit lower. But again, the student group closest to the goal, student groups closest to the goal are multilingual learners and our Hispanic Latino students. And the student group furthest from the goal is our Black or African-American students. So again, what can we learn from the student groups closest to the goal, and what can we do, learn from that to help our student groups further from the goal? This is just a review of everything I just said, written out for anybody who would like to read through that later. And teacher SEL results. So there's that teacher self-reflection, self-efficacy. So that is just below the national average at 68% favorability, and our PD is a slightly, or at, pardon me, at the national average of 44%. I always think this is funny because the self-reflection is always higher than the PD, and yet, as you can see, the national averages are flipped. I would just like to say that, of course, we would like to see the PD numbers going up regardless of what color it is. And what we've noticed is it's the same thing each year when you dig into individual questions, that our teachers really would like the PD to be as differentiated as possible. So we're continuing to learn from the sites when we look at it by schools where it's very highly rated in that area, and how can we help bring that to other school sites? If you could just go back one slide, there's one thing I wanted to highlight on there. We have also seen an increase in favorability in SEL PD for our high schools, which is really good to see. So when we look at all staff together around the teacher leadership relationships with their staff, school climate, school safety, those areas, I have it broken down by all staff together and then teachers pulled out, because last year we had seen some decrease in favorability when we looked just at the teachers. So we wanted to monitor that this year. So you can see that for our teachers and our staff, our staff-teacher leadership relationships are quite favorable, and our teacher numbers have come up in that regard, and they are at the national average. School climate, not quite as favorable as that first category, and the teacher average is just slightly below the national average. And our school safety favorability numbers are pretty high, though there is a difference in our teachers' perceptions of that as opposed to the rest of our staff. I did want to mention that that school safety rate, rating has been at or above 80% for quite some time. This is one of the things I really enjoy about the Panorama dashboard, is you can really dig into individual questions and learn from that. And when I dig into the staff leadership relationship questions, what we find is our staff overall has very, they feel that their leaders are respectful, friendly, and understanding. Those are three different questions, and all three of them were rated at 80% or above in favorability. And in areas with large increases include confidence that the leadership has the best interests of the school in mind, and that they find their leaders motivating. And then when we look at our families, it's a very different type of survey. And so you can dig into those specific questions and some of the data we exchanged earlier in the year. But the school climate ratings were at the national average at 65% favorability. School safety is held pretty steady. There's no national average there, that's why there's no color. Strengths and Opportunities, that's where they do the comparison of these are the things, priorities is, these are things that are important to us and how important they are, and strengths and opportunities is how we're doing in those areas. And I would say that those vary a lot by school. And I think in some ways, those responses can be really impactful for the schools, sometimes more than at the district level. And then the FSCP questions that we pull out, those two listed there for you, are at 66% favorability. There's also not a national average for that, because those are extra questions that we add. One of the things I found interesting about the family priorities this year is that the top five priorities that our families have identified are the same ones as last year. And so you can see the change from fall 2023. There's virtually no change. And so these are the top five, as I think of them, for our families. And I find it intriguing that our families would agree with all of us that our staff are the most important part of meeting our students' needs, and that they have, as you can see, there's a 10-point difference between their first one and the fifth one on the list. So hiring, developing, and retaining best staff is very important to our families. There's a specific question where we ask all families if they would recommend their child's school to others, and that is at 80% favorability, which has held steady for quite some time. And our family results are quite similar to last year, with the majority of respondents giving favorable ratings. You know, there's, when, you know, when I look at the data, I can look at it very specifically by grade level, by school, all sorts of different configurations. But if I pull all the way back out, I think we can see in our data that we still have room for growth for our secondary students' sense of belonging. We do need to dig into that staff-school climate, those staff-school climate results, and see how we can continue to move those in the right directions. And of course, attending to our family's priority of hiring, developing, retaining the best staff we can. And pulling all the way out, when we look at celebrations, I think having emotion regulation at the national average for all of our surveyed student groups is a real celebration. I think when you dig into the specifics of the staff leadership relationships results, it's actually quite heartwarming to see the hard work of our leaders being acknowledged by our staff. And then our families really think our elementary schools are great. So it's really neat to see that show up in the data as well. And then we are trying out our new check-in tool. The money we saved from the paper survey, we're rolling into a check-in tool, which allows for progress monitoring on a more regular basis with our schools. It is a really different tool in the dashboard. And so there's a lot of learning to do. We did our initial training, and I'm meeting with Panorama actually next week to have them do another training for us, because it's just so completely different. But schools are very excited to use it. And then we will learn from that this semester and determine if it meets our needs and if we want to move forward in future years. And then, of course, with our continuous improvement team works, work focused on improving climate and culture, we are looking at this data, schools are reflecting upon it, and continuing to make changes related to this data, and hoping to continue to move it in the right direction. And that is all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Questions? Mark?
Before we run into questions, I know today's been a busy day for Dr. Guthles, I believe. So she presented this morning at the Winter Case Conference on youth mental health. I believe she presented with Shannon Jenkins as well.
And Jen Chadwick Conway.
And Jen, yeah. And so we appreciate that. And I know that same presentation, actually, Dr. Schneider and I will be presenting nationally at the AASA presentation as well. So Thompson continues to be a state leader in our work around youth mental health, and we appreciate Dr. Guthles' leadership.
Thank you.
All right. Denise, questions?
So how does this all get fed back into the schools so that they can each address their own specific? And I'm assuming they're getting regular each time you pulse?
So the really cool thing is actually, our schools can see the same dashboard for their school that I can see for the whole district. And even cooler than that, we worked with Panorama so that I can monitor with Panorama the quality control of the data during the survey now, so that as soon as the survey closed, I was able to open it up to our school leaders. We've never been able to do that. So our school principals saw it almost immediately. And then they had a couple of days to digest it, and then it opened up to kind of the leaders and, you know, their counselors and whatnot. And then they had a week or so to digest it, and then it opened to all staff that have access to the dashboard. So they're, they're in there right away using it. And then we also provide support through various trainings and PD and whatnot to help them understand, analyze, and then take action on the data.
Then I assume it's tied back to their building plans?
Yes, yes, of the SUIPs. Yes. So all school leadership teams worked on having one of their SUIP goals related to climate and culture, and most, I can't think of any of them, that didn't use this data to help write that goal and track it.
Yeah.
Sandra?
The only question I had was, during our two plus two, you had talked about that you were going to send us the entire survey so we could read through everything. And I don't know if I missed it, but I could, I went to, when I went to get ready for tonight, I didn't find it.
So I added that to the slideshow right after we were done, the slideshow from the two plus twos.
From the two plus two.
Yeah.
Oh, I was looking in the wrong place.
I'm happy to work with Laura Lee to resend that. But I just went and added the link back in the slideshow that you had access to.
I missed it then. Okay.
No, I'm sorry. That wasn't clear.
Dr. Guthles, I know that the slides that we saw this evening may have different numbers than the slides that the board received. I'm referring to Slide 11, and the information that I am interested in, and I submitted this question, is what plans are in place to address high school ratings and supports and environments?
Yeah. And I did, did you get the written responses to your questions that I sent over to Dr. Schneider? Okay. So we can get, I would be happy to send those as well as answer your questions. But I did do written responses to all your questions to make sure that you really had thorough answers.
All right.
So Slide 11 is the student results. Is that correct?
I just wrote down the slide number with the slide 11. I didn't write down the title.
Thank you. Okay. And then could you just ask your question for me one more time?
Okay. My question is, what plans are in place to address high school ratings and supports and environments? And I understand that questions have changed, and that may have some kind of an impact. But it appeared to me that the, that the rating, that the number was rather low. And so I just wondered, what plans are in place to address that, or if you've had time yet to think of strategies to address that?
Absolutely. And that's an area that we've been monitoring for some time. And so one of the answers to that question is the work of the continuous improvement teams. So the focus of the learning this year was around culturally responsive restorative practices. So we started with warm welcomes, so that every single staff member greets every single student at every single door, every single day, to make sure that our students feel welcome. And then they also worked on co-created classroom agreements, so that there was shared understanding of how we're going to be together in the spaces where kids learn. And then, so schools, that was a lot for some schools to implement. Many of our high schools, to go straight to your question about high schools, didn't already have much like that. And so it was, it was a lot of work for them. And we've been really excited to see how they've tackled that. Then as we move throughout the year, we've added on to that some other tools and strategies, like reentry after a classroom agreement is broken, right? And there might be kind of a damaged relationship between the teacher and student. How is the student going to apologize, right? So we gave teams a framework for a restorative apology. And then how is the teacher going to support the student in reentry? And we also gave them a protocol for that. So I could give you many more examples, but basically, this year was building on previous years of continuing to help get those tools into the hands of our teachers so that they can have those strong relationships with their students. So those, those are just some of the examples I could share.
Having been a high school educator for a long time, I know the challenges regarding SEL topics or SEL concepts when, when working with older students. I'm glad to know that you already have strategies in place. And knowing the work that you and your team do, I know that there will be more. But I just wanted to call attention to the fact that that was one thing from the data
Yeah.
that I found concerning. The other one that concerned me was the teacher rating on school climate. And I understand that also might have been impacted by a change in question. But again, that rating seemed quite low. And so I was one, I wondered how you were addressing that. And in order to save time, if you have already responded to me, and I just haven't received that yet, we can skip that at this point.
Well, let's do a little bit of both, if that's okay.
All right.
Because what I would like to just say is that the work that we are doing, for instance, through continuous improvement teams, is designed to improve relationships between students and students and teachers and students. And so really, when you look closely at those, some of the questions within the climate portion that you're talking about for staff, having better relationships with their students and each other would improve that. So some of the work that I just described for our continuous improvement teams should also help with some of the staff climate results. So that's just another example of, of how that project is hopefully improving the climate and culture for, for everyone in our school district.
All right. And I'll look forward to reading what you're going to send me. Is the Panorama survey opt-in or opt-out?
It is opt. That's a good question. I'm trying to remember which direction we do it. We send out the notifications in the fall, and then the families sign off in the fall.
Okay. All right. I thought the areas for celebration are indeed areas for celebration. And I'm going to perhaps step beyond my role as a school board member and just say, Dr. Guthles, take the weekend off.
Thank you. And I think I would say, probably the way you're asking the question, they're opt-out. So the families, if we don't receive it and opt-out from them, then their students do take the survey.
Took care of all of them, didn't he?
Do you have the ability to see more student breakouts? I know you said that you can see it a lot of different ways. And I'm just wondering, when I think about how stressed some people have been, and how that would impact almost every one of these categories, looking at that over time by different groups might be really helpful. So even if it's not something that everybody's looking at, is it something that some people at the school level and at the district level have the ability to see?
So that question actually has come up related to our check-in tool, because we can, we can and do look at the fall data by student group, of course, as I showed in some of those slides. The, like I said, that check-in tool is very cool, but it's set up really differently. And so we're working with Panorama to understand, and I was very upfront with them, that we need to monitor all of our student groups, and so we need the check-in tool to be able to do that. So they're working with us to, they can definitely do it. We just want to make sure that it's easy for schools to do and doesn't take 25 steps. So that's the next round of training that we're doing, to be very frank. That's a work in progress.
It's new.
In the check-in tool, yeah.
Awesome. And then I'm going to give you a compliment in front of everybody that you've heard now twice at least, and I'm sorry that I'm saying it twice. But I just really wanted to point out that the, the two things that we've implemented at every school have made such a huge difference. And, you know, it's almost unfortunate that the baseline shifted, because I would have been so fascinated to see that, having seen the difference in every school at every level. It is like, I mean, truly, of all the things that I've seen us do, and there's some really cool stuff I've gotten to see, this is the one that had just that, like ripple effect everywhere in every school. And I just, I really appreciate that. As I said, at first, I was like, why are we starting with those? Those seem like super easy, why, no big deal. And yet, it was my favorite seeing it at a high school, actually. There is something so different about what these little, repeated, every day, I care about you moments are doing for high schoolers. You know, they eat that up. And I don't think some of them get that enough, and they're loving it. And I really appreciate seeing that. So thank you to everybody who's doing it. It's not just you, but you have gotten to share it with us. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody heard how amazing it is.
Thank you. Our teachers and school, continuous improvement teams, leadership teams have been working very hard.
If I can just jump in for a second with regarding what Dawn said, I think a lot of times we think that high school kids don't need that, that they've outgrown it, that they don't need the praise, they don't need the warm fuzzies. And to know that those, those aspects of their school and aspects of their life are being addressed in the Thompson School District is awesome.
Yeah, it really is. And if you haven't gotten a chance to see that in our middle schools- And if you haven't gotten a chance to see that in our middle schools and high schools, it is quite fun to watch what our high school teachers have come up with on how to do that. So thank you for noticing.
Thank you, Jennifer. Very important.
Thank you.
Care of yourself.
Thank you, I will.
You need to, I can hear it in your voice.
I'll go get some rest tonight, but thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right. 6.3, professional development. Bill, are you going to introduce her, or should we just?
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Seber, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. I have the honor to introduce Keely Garin, our Professional Development Director, who is part of the Human Resources Team.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the school board. Thanks for having us tonight. Yes, Keely Garin, Director of Professional Development. We're excited to provide you a mid-year update on professional development for the year. Thanks, Laurlee. Tonight's update connects to the Human Resources Focus Area of STRIVE 2025, specifically to 3.1 and 3.2. Our update tonight focuses on a review of the District Professional Development Day held on January 7. I have also included my answers to the questions I received at the end of last week in my So for licensed staff on January 7, this was their fourth district PD day of the year, and classified staff, it was their third. As we have done in, for the past three years, so this would be the fourth year, licensed staff have engaged in professional development at their individual schools led by their principals and school leadership teams. Traditionally, the January PD day provides schools the opportunities to engage in differentiated and targeted PD based on the student data and the student needs of their specific school and as it relates to district performance goals and areas. Conceptually, District Day 1 and District Day 4 are connected. For example, in this slide, I've just highlighted the row that we're referencing in terms of our conceptual PD plan at large. So this would just be the reference of most of the feedback from tonight is coming from that row. So in January, licensed staff spent the day working on cultural and climate and academic goals and performance strategies that their continuous improvement teams identified over the summer before school started. For classified staff, January 7 offered targeted, differentiated PD conference-style sessions at Mountain View again, and offered job-specific training through departments such as nutrition services, transportation, and custodial staff. So this is just a glance of what our conference-style schedule looks like. So we're just going to start by reviewing some of the classified staff feedback. Our classified staff survey is all qualitative, so they are all free response. We do collect email addresses and names in our feedback for classified staff that is different than licensed. For classified staff at Mountain View High School, there was about 55 separate PD sessions as well, so that's where all of this information is kind of coming from. Based on the survey results, classified staff reported several takeaways. Three major themes included naming specific sessions that folks really liked, such as the Working Together session, Leading Through Crisis session, and the Function-Based Behavioral session. The second major theme that came out was technical learning, so sessions particularly that focused on platforms such as Infinite Campus, Learning VIVI, or Medicaid documentation. The third major theme that I saw was sessions focused around theoretical knowledge. So, for example, practical ideas or practical ways to apply theoretical understanding such as critical thinking, accommodations versus modification, and the importance of understanding students' background as it relates to working with student behavior. We also asked classified staff to identify future PD requests, as well as, we always ask for recommendations for improvements. Classified staff provided that feedback. This is, I would say, very similar to other days, but always continuously. So future PD requests included more advanced topics across all areas, but specifically more in-depth training around supporting and responding to student behavior. The second kind of theme I saw was requests for specific PD based on job roles and assignments, such as training specific to being a learning center paraprofessional. And then third, just more opportunities for technical training, such as CPR, CPI, and then differentiation based off of level. So being a learning center para at elementary versus secondary. Areas of improvement included better sound systems. So one of the we run into at Mountain View is not having like a large sound system in the cafeteria, so that can, we are piecemealing speakers, projectors, mics in these larger areas where microphones are required, so sometimes sound can be difficult in our larger sessions. Each one of these days, especially on the classified staff specifically, there might be a session that all of a sudden becomes very popular that we didn't anticipate. So we might move them into a bigger room that doesn't have the sound set up, and so we are continuously even adjusting in the day based off of the feedback that we're getting. And so sometimes we are surprised by some feedback in the moment. Additional areas of improvement were increased relevant PD sessions and then offering the sessions more times throughout the day. So as you know, like in a conference-style session, we might offer one session while five other sessions are happening, or that session is only offered once a day. As our presenters are able to, we ask if they can do at least a morning and afternoon session, but sometimes that doesn't play out. For our classified staff, we do not spend any additional outside money. All the trainers are internal, or it's a partnership externally that somebody is donating their time and expertise on that. But most of the sessions are provided from internal staff. So we review and consider each participant's feedback for each opportunity. So there are 135 classified job titles at minimum. That would include learning center paraprofessional, that doesn't include the differentiation based off of level. So when we're trying to accommodate and respond to at minimum 135 job-specific PD opportunities that can be challenges. So when we get this feedback each time, we connect with each division, each department, as well as our classified PD committee and the, I have to write it down so I don't say it wrong, the Classified Staff Advisory Council to meet those needs. I know those needs also come up through the meet-and-confer process in that group and get funneled through us that way. So we are continuously partnering with leaders, department leads, and our staff to understand what they need and be able to provide that as best possible. One of the other barriers that we run into is that, for example, our CPR staff in the district that have been hired and trained to provide CPR are licensed staff right now. So there is conflict on some of those days. So sometimes there are, that licensed staff member can be excluded and be able to teach, but many of those opportunities are on Saturdays. Classified staff are typically then either offered comp time or are paid additional hours to attend the training that they're needed, that's required of them for their roles. But we're also following up with them if there's additional opportunities that aren't on those days to ensure people are getting what they need. So, moving into the licensed feedback, we do collect this data anonymously, so that people feel like they can provide that without any retaliation. So the barrier to that is that I can't follow up with an individual and ask maybe more about what they meant by that, like I can in the classified feedback. So I've provided, the next five slides are just the snapshots of each of the questions that we ask, so we try to keep these to about five, to not over-survey. So 95% of licensed staff respondents reported that they felt that the January 7 PD aligned to, or somewhat agreed or strongly agreed that the PD aligned to the major improvement strategies identified at their school. 88% of the respondents reported that the PD activities at their school were worthwhile, were a worthwhile use of their time. 88% of respondents also reported that the feedback would, oh, sorry, I think there's a duplicate, I'm sorry, I caught that in here. 88% said that the PD activities inspired them to change or improve their practice. 89% of respondents, licensed respondents, felt that the PD activities were likely to improve student outcomes. And overall, 90% of licensed staff that responded, agreed, somewhat agreed, agreed, or strongly agreed that the PD on January 7, that they were satisfied with that. So we also asked two more additional questions for licensed staff. We asked them to identify a practice that will have the greatest impact on their school. Many staff at large identified the common language and the universal practices, so Jennifer talked about some of those pieces, whether it was classroom agreements or warm welcomes, but getting everybody on the same page was, at large, the biggest takeaway for most of the respondents, so that common language and school-wide consistency. We always ask for improvement, so when licensed staff were asked to identify the student outcomes that will be, I'm sorry, student outcomes that they see will be improved as a result of the PD, they identified student achievement, specifically writing was named the most, as well as sense of belonging for students. Now we've asked for licensed staff to report on how PD could be improved for next time, and at large, more time, more work time, and then more learning from their peers. So that was an interesting one, too, so that's exciting to see that there are clearly some experts in the buildings and teachers want to continue to learn from each other. So I have two more slides with some testimonials. When I say testimonials, I think about celebrations at large. So these might seem a little bit repeated, but this is a separate question. This question is more in response to, is there anything else you want to share with us? Again, at large, licensed staff really appreciated presenters, so those were those teacher experts, as well as being in their schools on that day. And then classified staff appreciated the organization of the events that day, and they also appreciated the presenters of their PD sessions. And then lastly, I just have a brief update on how many PD sessions and hours we have so far, but this is a running total. So currently, it looks like we have about 250 courses or sessions, if you will, totaling for 66,000 hours. We hope to continue to increase because we're increasing reporting and tracking, especially around classified and APT staff. On our classified PD days, that is really actually open to APT staff as well, it's relevant for most staff members. So we hope that continues. I would also say, in terms of reporting data, sometimes there might be other things going that we aren't tracking that we don't know about, and so the more that we know, the more that we can transcribe for folks, and then they can use this, whether it's for relicensure purposes or future leadership opportunities or job changes that they're interested in.
Wow. I wrote down two notes. This must be a really stressful time for you.
Well, it's like the end of my year as of yesterday, it feels like, right? So I can kind of breathe.
I mean, it's just crazy.
It's a lot.
Do they, the classified people pre-register for their sessions? So it's just first come, first served in the room?
Yeah, and we've shifted that. What we had noticed across the board, back to even ed camp, is that when there was preregistration, if participation was low, like five or under, then facilitators would cancel. And so we took that option away and said that if you're going to host, you're going to host, and if one person shows up, then it was worthwhile. And so that's been a great change, because people feel valued, even if it's just an individual person getting the information that they needed. So yeah, some days it can be quite busy. Yesterday was a really great day. We had all elementary licensed staff, as well as classified staff at Mountain View, and an exciting celebration was we brought over the grounded coffee bar from Mountain View. They set up Mobily over there, and that was a great success, and so we hope to continue to do that as well.
Wow. All right. Other questions? Let's start, where did we start last? Dawn, why don't you, you have any questions?
I just wanted to shout out, and I always kind of, it's a great pulse check when you see that some of the critical feedback falls into the category of like, the rooms are too cold, which does matter, but like, that tells you a lot when that's what people are commenting on about the quality of the education. And so shout out to everybody who did that.
Yeah.
Amy?
I didn't, I don't know if I knew this, but we use our own to
Use our own.
Do all this education, so.
For the classified.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just, I always love how you, you know, have your follow-up and your improvement, and it just is this continual, you know, cycle, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Having gone to lots of sessions and filled out feedback reports, and then going to another session for professional development, and wondering, why did I take the time to record my feelings, and I had talked to colleagues who did the same thing? I don't think folks in Thompson School District, whether they're licensed staff or classified, probably could honestly say that they really feel that nobody is paying attention to the feedback. I've given you feedback before, that when you make presentations, it's really important to me to hear what people didn't think was great, or what additional opportunities should be offered, and you do that now on a consistent basis. So I have one closing question. You get all this feedback, how do you decide which improvement suggestions to implement? Is it by a number? Do X number of people have to make a similar comment? Or how do you move forward with improving PD?
I will tell you, we look at and address almost every single comment or feedback that we can that's specific to classified, because there are so many different job titles. And what was a success on one day might be not a success on the following day, so we are, we look at every single one of those responses. In terms of licensed staff, that is a collaboration with Learning Services. So just a few hours ago, I was meeting with members of Learning Services to, Theo was just asking, like, I can't wait to get that feedback from yesterday, so we can continue to use that as we make our PD plans for the next school year. So really, we, down to the individual, we are taking that into consideration.
Wow, that's so important. Thank you.
Nancy?
I would just echo what everyone else is saying, that you do a really great job, you and your team, and I really like how the classified is really giving a lot more training. I think that's really useful and beneficial for them.
Alexandra?
I believe, as we've talked about before, substitutes are invited to attend.
Yes.
Correct? But it's, but do they get paid for the day, or is it, it's non-paid for them?
It's a non-paid day. They have opportunities for some paid training. How they choose to use those hours is up to them. What I do find is if there is a substitute who wants to come to one of the trainings, they might just pop in for that instead of spending the whole day, especially, I see that mostly with the safety offerings.
Okay.
Yep.
And do you find that a fair number of substitutes come, or not so much, or?
I would say just a handful typically, or are long-term subs, or some of those subs that have that strong partnership. But that could be an area, you know, for improvement, figuring out how to get that group there, but also it's a day off, right? So.
Okay, thank you.
Denise?
Just that I love the continuous process improvement cycle that you're in. Great to take data, do something with it. Congratulations on putting an engine in that seems to be really picking up momentum and addressing the needs of our teachers.
Thanks.
And our classified staff.
And just a thank you to all the folks in all of the divisions willing to donate their time and come out on that day, because, you know, they're busy on those days as well, so couldn't do it without them.
Nicely done.
All right, thank you.
And get some rest now, because I think you must be worn out. All right. This one is 8.4, Kinston Centerra Land Dedication.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education, Dr. Schaefer, Todd Picone, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Tonight it provides just really our process, be transparent with the work we're doing to land our school site east. to land our school site east of I-25 in the Centera-Kinston area. So in part of this process, you'll see on the next slide, we have board policy that really guides us on what to do, and then pieces to make the board aware of when we find issues within the sites we have. So I'll spend a couple minutes on this diagram, kind of orientate, and then walk through the different issues we have, and then thoughts on next steps. So you see the bottom of the page there is Highway 34, then the center yellow, or I'm sorry, white line there is I-25. Kinston is that entire development on the right side of the page, so a pretty big area. What you'll see circled, and is in bright green, is the original school site, when we started this process years ago now. That's where we just kind of conceptually put the school site. It's a site size similar to Riverview, so a K-8-sized site. As the development's moving forward, we found some issues, because in board policy FE-E dash E, it lists several items that could disqualify the site from the school district taking it. So, not that it can, but the board policy says just make the board aware, and then we can work through the next steps if we so choose. So on the original school site, there's actually a high-pressure gas line that travels like the entire, almost length of the US, that falls really, well, almost, well, it does, it goes underneath the school site and then within the entire neighborhood. So in looking at that, we also looked at the proposed site you see up in the purple. So this school site that we're looking at as well, does not have that, but it does fall within an airport influence zone. So that's not, you know, as we talk to attorneys, the risk of that, we just need to be aware of, but it's not unheard of that, you know, things are built in that zone. The hospital's built there, there's another school in another district built in airport-influence zone. High Plains actually sits within, like, almost across the street, if you look within this line. So what that airport-influence zone shows is, it's really that blue shade that overlays the top, and it's dashed all the way through, and it does, the proposed site is encompassed in, is in that area. So that's what we're working through. We did look at both disqualifying features with our attorneys. The larger risk seems to fit within the high-pressure gas line. When we looked at the proposed site, the insurance company said there's nothing additional within that. The awareness from our attorneys, as we were looking through it, was really around sound, just really the noise that it could produce. But when you look further into, and believe me, there's like a whole gamut of what an airport-influence zone is, there's different levels. So this is on the outer level, 65 decibels is the concern level, and that's really right near the runways, so we're far away from that, but it still sits within there, so that's why we're talking tonight about this. But so, those are the two proposed sites. You know, as you look at the yellow and green, there might look like there's a lot of different options. What's not on there is there's oil sites, you know, active wells, that kind of determine where we can put things, so it's putting a puzzle together, and these are the two pieces that we've kind of come up with. So, in saying all that, really, what we're required to do is just bring this awareness forward to the board. We're going to continue working with, or the suggestion is to work with our legal counsel and insurance company, to then make sure that, really, that proposed site on the north side, in that purple airport, is okay. Before it actually gets dedicated to us, we come back to the board for approval, but it is a long process to get to that point, so to be fair to the process and the developer, what we don't want to do is get a year down the road, and then, you know, it's, this becomes an issue. So we want to make the issue, we're the board aware of this issue now, and just, yeah, any feedback of concern, but our plan would be to move forward and really dive into greater details on that northern site, that if you orientate and see yourself, where there's the Best Buy there, there's the railroad tracks in that whole Centera area, it sits north of that, so it sits.
Right, that driveway under the interstate?
Yeah, yeah, so, but north of that, yeah. I'm sorry? Correct, the north side, yes. So that's the general area, you know, we don't even have the location, because there's a large location, we kind of shifted, but that's the thought as of now, so. Does the board have any questions, or concerns with that direction?
I have one.
Which is that, say that we keep proceeding on this, because of the policy that exists, we would have to vote on it with, like, an acknowledgement that there's an exception because of it maybe being in one of those zones?
Correct, yes. So yeah, as part of the final dedication, we'd say, yes, it satisfies our needs, but it does have this
Exceptional policy.
Factor on it, yes.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Nancy?
And how many acres is this? Is this dedicated for an elementary, a K-8?
It's proposed a K-8, so it's about 14 to 15 acres.
Okay.
Yeah. It's the same, really, footprint as Riverview, we use that design for this.
Okay, and McQuinney's are going to pay for the new school building?
Yeah. Oh, here, so, yeah. Yeah, I don't think so, but they're good to work with, so.
All right, thanks.
And, so I, I mean, I assume you've been working with them about these sites, or how does, like, is that, are they agreeable to potentially having this northern site, or how's that process going?
They are, yeah, I mean, they're, you know, they're a good partner for us, and, yeah, we've been working very close, and that's when we sat down, you know, as this develops, we finally sat down and said, okay, we're to a point to where we have options, and, you know, staffed in for comfortable going to the next step, and to be fair to, you know, McQuinney's and their development, you know, they've got to put time and money in making this happen, too, so that's why we came forward tonight.
And I'd be sort of curious to know about how the noise of the airport compares to the noise of the freeway, if it's right next to the freeway.
Yeah, there is a buffer there, yeah, and there are standards within the decibel levels, that really, anything above 65 decibels is what we've got to not build within. Yeah, so that's something we already looked at, and, yeah.
All right. Scott?
So, do we have anything, looking at air pollution, right there by the highway? I mean, a proposed school site next to the highway, I know they do it, but.
There are environmental risks, yes, I mean, I don't have the, we can look into that, I don't have the exact, you know, what is the risk of being there compared to a quarter mile to the east.
But that's not anything that we would have to look at for this new proposed site?
At this point, no, that's not what has been brought up, so I can, we can double, triple-check to make sure that's not, yeah.
Thank you.
Todd, are you working against any deadline? Are there any time constraints in terms of getting this worked out?
Well, there's always a deadline. Yeah, I mean, really, what the deadline is, is the development's moving forward, so they want to keep building. The school site, as the city sees it right now, is the original site you saw with the gas line, so they're asking us, okay, we can't build on this, we can't do anything until we get this figured out, so it's really more of a deadline to, you know, continue the development, pushing through to the south. We're okay, as far as our deadline of, you know, procuring it, the dedication for when it's projected to be needed, it's more just to be a partner, just so they can, we can figure this out, so they can plan their development.
So you're not working against a date, like, we have to have this figured out by 2028? I am just throwing out a year.
I am, we are not, as the district know, but the developer is, they're, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Todd.
Yes.
All right. 8.5, budget update. Bob, Mr. Ebersol.
Madam Board, Board President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, thank you. Robert Ebersol, Chief Financial Officer. I'll start with the financial discussion. Every chief financial officer has a different financial format. The format that was sent to you is not my format, it was inherited, it gives you the information, we're planning to change that. I will note that Zach did not load the January budget, because the minutes were not approved till tonight's meeting.
All right.
Very, very, no, it's okay, because we want to make sure that, in case there were any changes that might have come through at that point. So these January financials do not include the January budget that you voted at your last board meeting. Secondly, the timing of the expenses, the other thing on the format, the budget was not, well, the budget was not presented in our accounting system on a monthly basis, so we don't have a budget to actual, we have a percentage to actual, which is a way of looking at the numbers, is a way of looking at that point. But what that tells me is that I don't know, and I can't tell you, when something should have been spent. Should have been spent in September, when the school was starting? Are we going to do it in August, before school starting? So that part, I'd like to touch all the numbers to make sure they're correct, I haven't touched them yet. Zach hasn't touched them yet. We are using the opportunity, when any staff members ask us something, we say, stop, we need to know why you're asking us the question, how does it affect the budget, how does it affect our financials? What do we need to do to change a procedure, if we need to, because we don't understand why you're asking? And we're not blaming them, because nobody told them. So we have a lot of good people in the finance department, some of which were at the professional development and giving some of the training, and they obtained it, too. We have a lot of good staff members in all the departments that are asking us for certain information, we're giving it to them as soon as possible. That means we're not giving it to you as soon as we want to, as well. So we're updating the budgeting process at that point. The other thing I would note, as, when the board adopted the budget last year, you budgeted a budget that has more expenses than revenue. Well, it was balanced by using part of the reserves. The district has some good reserves, and that's a good way of budgeting at the appropriate time, when you look at some things there. So when you look at the numbers, you always want things to be in the black. Well, we budgeted to be in the red, accounting-wise. We have the money to pay our bills, we have the money to pay our salaries. So I always want to say, accounting-wise, we're going to be looking at some different things there. So looking at that, I would say that the numbers are as presented, and I can't tell you anything more about them for what they mean. The other thing I would say is that, looking at how we spend money, people don't try to spend money to use it, they spend money to spend money on the program. So it's not the, I have to buy more sticky notes to spend the rest of my budget, that is nowhere in the mentality of the district, so I'm very happy with that part, for what I've seen. And then on the cash balances, on the next sheet, we have cash, we don't have the property tax money coming in yet, that comes in in March, we have an interest-free loan with the state, that we can draw down the money in the short term on that, it's a great operating procedure for that part as well. Cash is okay, we're paying our bills, we don't worry about paying our bills, we don't worry about paying our employees, I always want to say that. So that's where I am today, I can't give you any more information than, but I'd be open to any question that any board member has.
Start. All right, let's start down this way. Denise, any questions on budget? Okay, Alexandra? Nancy?
First, thank you for everything. So the only thing I wanted to just bring up, so all I did in my spreadsheet is, because like, to your point, you don't have the month-by-month, so I just divided everything by seven months that's happened so far in the year, and compared it that way. When I do that, it does look like central support, for whatever reason, is really running high. I don't know if the next couple months, that'll level out, but that is something concerning, and same with school administration, because they both look like they're going to be around $2 million over, but it's hard to say, because I don't know, like you, what hasn't been paid that maybe, because you can't see it in the budget yet, but that's of concern to me, because we were already budgeted to use around $11 million of reserves, so it's just something, just to be cognizant of, which I'm sure you are.
Thank you, we will definitely keep an eye on that part.
You?
Great, thank you for your time.
You. Bill, negotiations, I'm sorry, just trying to.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Seabrook, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. I'm presenting tonight with Sue Timer, RTA President. Negotiations update. Focus area at number three, human talent. Investigate areas in compensation and benefits so that TSD is competitive. This presentation will connect to STRIVE 2025. Number three, human talent, to upcoming negotiations, which is on Monday, February 24th. Discussion items for tonight is highlights of 24, 25 negotiation agreements, interest-based model for negotiations, we continue using that model, and then we'll introduce the negotiations team, and then review negotiation dates and time.
So, looking at what we accomplished last year, if you recall, we have a two-year MOU, so last year was an off-year, so primarily focused on compensation. So teachers did get steps and columns in our new agreement. Really, we're excited to add $3,300 to the base salary, and that rippled through to all of the other cells throughout. There was a little bit of change with the extra-duty salary schedule, we added four positions per elementary, in terms of elementary leadership team, which was really a good thing, because we have teachers who were doing the work without being compensated for it. They added girls' flag football head coach, and you've talked about that flag football team, unified programming coordinator, one for the district, step for all extra-duty contracts, which doesn't happen every year, so that was good. Also, a $500 a year stipend for licensed staff who have national board certification. Also out of that, we had a lot of task forces formed, so there was one task force that specifically addressed elementary plan time, site-based shared decision-making models across the district, and leave practices.
So today, we finalized our critical questions, so two plus two is an oversight committee, so it's two members of administration, two members of TEA that kind of meet, and we move critical questions forward for us, for discussion. So the eight questions that we have is, the first one is, what adjustments need to be made to site-based shared decision-making process? So that's a committee group that we worked with outside in negotiations, going into negotiations this year. What adjustments? Number two is, what adjustments need to be made to elementary plan time? So that's a continuation of conversation we had last year. Number three is, how can we recruit and retain quality professionals, having to do with compensation? How can we clarify the problem-solving grievance process? Question five, how does the TEA president's release time help support education? Number six, how do we address undesirable student behavior? Seven, are leave practices meeting the needs of our employees? And that's a committee group question. And the last one, that's a continuation in there, how do we clean up the memorandum of understanding to match intention? So interest-based, it's the same model that we're using, so I necessarily won't go over there, but, you know, we cover the story for each one of the questions, we cover the story, the interest, options, criteria, solution agreements, and implementation. So negotiating team looks somewhat similar, we have Karen Hanford, elementary school principal, who's new to the team, and then Erin Estevez, who's a teacher at High Plains, is a new member for TEA's team. And in negotiation dates, we invite all of you to be there, if you'd like. Like I said, February 21st is in the boardroom, we have March 13th, April 10th and 11th, and we really love the back-to-back days. So we love it so much, we're like, let's try a trifecta, so instead of two days, let's try three. So April 28th, 29th, and 30th is a group of times we're meeting, and the last meeting is May 5th. Thank you, board, any questions for us? Sue will be more than likely to answer any questions you have, so. Sue will be more than likely to answer any questions you have, so I'll stand out of the way and let Sue.
I have questions. One, first of all, is, are you having a facilitator?
Yeah, so Susan Sparks is coming back. We're totally excited. She's been with us, I think this is year 26 with us.
Also, on your dates that you're meeting, so what happens if a negotiation, sub cancels at the last minute? I'm looking at it, and there's Fridays, Mondays, Mondays and Fridays are big. How do you handle that? Because subs seem to be a big...
Yeah, so typically the school would cover that, or that's something in human resources that we'd need to send a person over. But it's, it's highly important to be attending the meetings.
Okay. And I don't know which side we start on. Don, question? Alexandra?
I just have a question. This year, there are a lot more negotiation dates than last year. Is that because it's the, like, on-year, so there's more topics to discuss?
Totally. This is the critical question here. So last year we had compensation and two related items. So this one, we have eight.
One more question. Did we get a copy of those questions? Because they weren't on our...
Yes. We, we didn't add that because we just finalized right before the meeting today.
Oh, I guess that would make sense, but if we could get a copy of that...
So, yeah, at 4:45 before executive session, we finalized. And then we called Susan Sparks on the phone. She was on a plane heading to Arizona. So we had a conversation with her of what the agenda looks like and what the questions are.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Appreciate you guys. All right. We're almost done, I promise. I think the only other thing is there's one remit, one written report, which I believe was pie? No, is that right? And then just an announcement, February 26th, which is next Wednesday, we will have a special meeting at 5 o'clock here in the ad building. Okay? Other than that, and if you can't make it, I'll make sure that you have what you need. The 26th. Oh, yeah, I know. It was, that was, we'll work through it. I'll, I'll make sure you have things. All right. Meeting is adjourned.